I called a session, or I call to session this City Council's special meeting on April 13th, 2021. The topic this evening is city-street conditions, needs, and funding options. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Whitaker?
Here.
Mayor Potem Dunlap?
Here.
Councilmember Jung?
Present.
Councilmember Silva?
Here.
Councilmember Zara?
Here.
And I would ask the city clerk to, in a nutshell, explain how those viewing this proceeding this evening may participate.
Thank you, Mayor. We are currently operating under executive orders issued by the governor last March, March of 2020, not last month, March, to have modified public participation rules for these meetings under COVID restrictions. Members of the public can access the meeting streamed live online at Fullerton.legistar.com or on Spectrum Channel 3 and ATT U-verse Channel 99. We do have limited seating available on a first-come, first-served basis here in the council chambers, and of course, everyone visiting shall wear face masks and observe social distancing protocols. The public is welcome to make oral public comments here at the meeting or via computer, smart device, or telephone. If you are logging in, please note that your attendee name and/or phone number may display during the meeting. If you wish to speak during, via telephone, call 1-669-900-9128. Enter Zoom meeting ID 932-60372726 and press the pound sign. And when prompted to enter a participation ID number, press the pound sign again. If you are participating via telephone and would like to make a comment, press star nine when the mayor calls for comment on the item. And you will be called by staff to address the council, and you will have three minutes to do so. You may only speak one time on each agenda item. And if you are logging in via Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. And if you need any of that information, again, it's on the agenda, which is posted at Fullerton.legistar.com.
Thank you for that. What I'd like to do is, once again, remind those participating this evening that it is a single-topic issue that we're discussing this evening. And what we'd like to do is hear from staff, the presentation. Following that presentation, we will accept public comments, any observations or ideas, suggestions. We're very interested in hearing from you on that. And then we will follow that with an open discussion among the city council members. After public comment, we will look to find out how many people have called in, want to make comments via Zoom, and we'll handle those as well before the item comes back to the city council. So this evening, as I mentioned, city-street conditions, needs, and funding options is the topic. This will be presented by Meg McWade, Director of Public Works, and David Grantham, Principal Civil Engineer. So we can begin to, you're ready?
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members, and also all those that came out on a Tuesday evening. We really appreciate this opportunity to talk to you about this item that we know is so important to both our residents and our businesses. With that, I'll introduce our Principal Civil Engineer, David Grantham.
Thank you very much. Remove the mask, because this can be a lot of talking.
Please be comfortable as possible.
Okay, I'm okay if you're okay. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, we are here to talk about streets. A little introduction about myself for members of the public and everyone watching online or on Channel 3. So, I am actually a 35-year resident of Fullerton. Went to Troy, grew up, did the whole thing in Fullerton, and haven't left. I'm also a registered civil engineer in California, and I spent the last three years back at the city of Fullerton handling the capital improvement department. So, any major project that comes across, has to go out and built by the city, comes across my desk. Those streets, storm drains, everything. But before I went to, came back to the city, because I was an intern here, actually, I spent 20 years as a consulting civil engineer. Did a lot of work for other cities, did street plans, did site plans, did sewer plans. So, I kind of have a kind of bit of a unique viewpoint when it comes to what the situation we're dealing with here, at least from a design point of view and a management point of view. Been on the consultant side, been on the city side. What I want to do tonight is have a presentation that is, hopefully, provides some context to the situation that we're dealing with, have more of a discussion as much as we can rather than me just speaking the entire time. And I'd like to do is provide to the residents, I know the council's probably heard, will hear a lot of this, I've heard a lot of this before, but for the residents to kind of give some background, really get the context, the history of where we've come, what we've done, where we're going, so they can be part of what I hope is more an informed decision as we move forward. Part of the reason I do that is because I actually have met with resident groups in the past before COVID, and part of the big thing to me was education. There's a lot of, I spent, you know, hours, hour and a half, hour here with different groups, just Q&amp;As. And it was very enlightening for both sides. So I think that's kind of my approach here, is, you know, based on my experience in the past, I think hopefully I can present that here. Okay, so let's get into it. Here are the topics. It's kind of a roadmap, so to speak, we're talking streets, so roadmap, where I want to go with the presentation. I will be stopping at certain points. Maybe you want to give me a round of applause? No, I doubt it. But the idea here is that maybe you have some clarifications you want to ask, you want me to stop talking, things like that. But also Ken will be chiming in, Meg might be chiming in from time to time, so trying to keep it loose and a little informal, but get the point across. All right, let's get into it. I'm going to start with infrastructure. We're definitely going to be talking about streets in this presentation, but I want to touch on infrastructure to start with. On the screen there, you can see everything that the city of Fullerton owns and maintains and has to pay for. They're all our assets. And I've highlighted the streets in blue. We've got about 300 miles of streets that we have to address. But I want to point out all the other infrastructure items we have, because I'm going to touch on it and I'm going to come back to it a couple times during the presentation. So, please take a look at this. We've got a lot of alleys, we've got a lot of bridges, parking lots, parks, that we have to address, not just the streets. All right, so a very quick overall summary of the infrastructure, it's nothing that any, everybody already knows it, we haven't been funding the structure, infrastructure. We've had a problem that's been going for a lot of years. We are a full-service city, so that does not help with having to, the money that we have, where we can spend it. The revenue growth over the year has not been good for us, unfortunately. And the result of that over the years is obvious. You know, our infrastructure is breaking down, and we don't have the ability to fix it properly at this time.
I'm going to interrupt you just one second. Could you explain what full-service city is?
I actually will.
Oh.
So, sorry. Yeah, as I said it, I'm like, man, I should have waited for that one, but anyway. All right, so let's start focusing on the streets. So, on the screen, there's kind of a percentage breakdown. Can we turn that light off?
I'll wind it.
There we go.
I'll wind up your guest screen.
A little bit better. All right, so a breakdown of our major or arterial streets and our local-residential streets. So the pie chart shows, you know, the percentage of the good, bad, poor, very bad. Arterial streets, the pie shape is, the percentages, they're not bad, they're okay. It's the local streets that are the problem, it's very unbalanced, and I think everyone knows that by driving around. And the kind of the weird thing is that when you average it out, it says that we have a fair condition streets. And that a lot has to do with the unbalancing. We've got a third of the streets that are very good, a third of the streets that are very bad. So they kind of cancel each other out. What we want to do, obviously, is, actually, we want to reduce the very good streets, we want to reduce the percentage of very poor streets, and increase the percentage of good and fair streets. That's going to be tough to do very, very quickly. It's just going to take a long time to get to that point. So I'll put on the slide up on the screen here where our poorest-conditioned streets are, and what I'm trying to say here is, it's all over the city. Pick any point in the city, you'll find a bad street. And here are very poor streets, same thing. We don't have certain areas that are worse than others, it's just spread out throughout the entire city. Oops. So, let's kind of go back in history and talk about how we got here. So, let's talk about a full-service city. Full service from an infrastructure point of view means that we own, operate, and maintain all our infrastructure facilities, water, sewer, storm drain, as opposed to other cities, say like Yobalinda, they have the Yobalinda Water District, Irvine, IRWD. We have everything. It's good, and sometimes bad. The city, you know, is over 100 years old, but the vast majority of our growth happened in the 50s through the 70s, and that was dictated on aerospace being in the city, huge employer of people in the city. And so at the time, the city made the decision to emphasize residential development over any other development because you've got a huge employer or employees in town. Let's keep the employees in town, let's have them live in town, work in town. And the population exploded from 20,000 to 100,000 people. So in the 50s through the 70s, a lot of infrastructure was being built, a lot of it was being built. So as you get to the 70s and the 80s, you're still what you can kind of consider to be in the honeymoon period of the infrastructure life. Everything's still okay, it needs minimal maintenance. So we're able to do the minimal maintenance to keep everything kind of ticking along, doing okay. Now we get into the impacts that happened after the 1970s, so specifically in 1978. Prop 13 took place. And, you know, hey, as a resident, it's good for me, you know, keeps my property tax down. But from a city point of view, not very helpful, certainly reduce the amount of income and revenue that could possibly be brought in from the city. Prior to Prop 13, the cities had the ability to modify the tax rate depending on what expenses the city needed. So the city could adjust tax rate, get the money in, and basically balance the budget and make sure things have been taken care of. Post Prop 13, you couldn't make that adjustment anymore. And the state took a three-year average and decided that's the benchmark of how Prop 13 in Fullerton, the tax rates, will be decided. And it was slightly on the low side, Ken, if you want to jump in and provide anything, but it was slightly on the low side to other cities because the city of Fullerton didn't use that potential of taxing to the fullest extent. So we kind of got dinged a little bit because we were being nice to the residents and not necessarily taxing them as much as we could have at the time. So, nice at the time hurt us once Prop 13 took place. And then at the same time, in the 1980s, when infrastructure started to need a little extra tender loving care, that's when the revenues stopped coming in and we weren't able to make the modifications to bring the money in. So that's the beginning of when maintenance on the infrastructure started to decline. Then we make it into the 1990s, and you've got the first recession. Revenue's reduced, it's an ongoing theme. So how do you deal with that decreased revenue? Well, you can't do as much work. So that kind of hit the city budget for a couple of years. So in 1993, I'm sure some of the longer-term residents will remember, city council voted to impose a 3% utility tax. It would generate about 2.6 million a year. A lot of residents didn't like that, and they recalled the council members, and as a result, the tax was repealed. So the city basically did not gain any ability to generate revenue since then, in the 1990s. At the end of the 90s, staff brought to the council a report, bringing up the infrastructure deficiencies, and kind of brought up some options of how to raise funds. Council did not, for whatever reason, did not act on that, and no new revenue was put in place.
Before you go further, I just wanted to point out that at the turn of the millennium, there are the late 90s and turn of the millennium, that government revenues, even city revenues, were riding pretty high. There were surpluses to be had, and those surpluses were not deployed in this direction. For whatever reason, no one here was on the council at that time, obviously, but where surpluses did develop during that timeframe, this was still not the priority that it needed to be.
All right, let's move into the 2000s. We had a group of residents known as the Infrastructure Advisory Committee. They presented another report to council, which included special or general tax and neighborhood assessment recommendations. For whatever reason, again, nothing was acted upon, and no new revenue source was put in place. 2002, kind of as a result of the 9/11 attacks, along with a lot of other cities, especially in Orange County, council approved enhanced safety pension formulas for our safety personnel. And of course, those obligations are ongoing and need to be paid. And then the last, what they call the Great Recession, hit in 2008, and with no dedicated funding, again, revenues came down, trying to figure out how to balance budgets, frequency of maintenance activities had to decrease. So the bottom line is, we've had increasing costs over the years, but our revenue sources have been limited. Now, the graph shows on the right Measure M and gas tax, I'll talk about those later, but it's just intended to show that our construction costs have increased dramatically as opposed to our revenue going up. And I'm going to pause right there, if anyone has any comments, clarifications, anyone else want to jump in and make a statement?
You know, I guess one thing I would say, and I know it's nice that it's here in big letters, you know, increasing costs, limited revenue sources, but one of the things I noticed was, you know, kind of on each of those slides, it talked about revenue, 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 as opposed to any actual controls on expenditures over that same timeframe. And I wasn't sure if that's just, you know, the nature of a report like this, you're not going to look back historically and look at what some of those, you know, expenses, whether required or discretionary were, you know, but I'd be curious to get your take on that, because it seems to me, from a business perspective, you would want to also, you know, track those expenses.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't go into, I'm not going to lie, I didn't go into great detail on that. That's something I'd have to go talk to finance about. It's my understanding, though, that, you know, essentially, we've got a lot of competing needs in the city, with costs only increased, as with anything, costs go up, and we have to figure out how we're going to spread the money out to cover all those costs. And, you know, typically, you know, infrastructure can be something that can be reduced.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, what we could do is go back and look at all the expenditures that were done during that time that focused on infrastructure. So, at that time, you may have had a disproportionate growth in redevelopment, and therefore, there were redevelopment dollars that were going out. We do know that some redevelopment funds were used on some streets, but not necessarily, probably to the greater detail that it could have been at the time. So, but we can go back and look at, again, what were the priorities of the councils at that time, and how were some of these additional fundings used, you know, acquisitions or other things like that, so that is an important part of it, so.
You know, I think that would be helpful, because I also think if you look at it and you were to track it, as you see the historic funding levels, if you were to look at increases in sales tax and property tax revenue over that same timeframe, you know, my guess is if you did like a 20- or 30-year look back, you know, you'd largely see any increases in property or sales tax revenue tied to increases in compensation for, you know, probably police, fire, and perhaps other public employees as well. You know, certainly the lion's share of that, of those increases, as opposed to, you know, going to road, streets, infrastructure, things like that.
Plus, Prop 13 certainly had an impact. However, there have been offsets involved in that, including the fact that property values have risen higher, in large part because of the reduction in property taxes, or at least the predictability of it. A big part of the problem has been the increasing share of property taxes that go to education in this state because of EREF as well. So, it's hard to look at any of those claims that we were looking at earlier without providing context for those. Indeed, this graph is pretty good at showing how voters have been willing to throw more money at our transportation needs. But Measure M, and then gas tax, most recently SB 1, that money goes elsewhere. It's not money that we've been able to utilize for our budgeting purposes here, for the most part, except for a small fraction of that.
Yeah, and there's, again, as going back on that, we can look at overall trends in the expenditures. One of the things that I believe David will get to is, you know, in the early 2000s, I believe it was around 2002, or it may have been '04 or '06, is when, you know, enhanced retirement benefits, which that has been an increasing cost, and a troublesome increasing cost. But again, going back and looking at all the revenues and expenditures and how they are done, we've looked at that in some other issues back in September and even before, at some other prior study sessions on the streets. But overall, yes, the ability to continue to fund the infrastructure costs, which have increased in their decreasing quality, which requires more funding, has not been adequately maintained by the city overall, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, councilmember Jung.
There has been a lot of discussion about revenue growth, or in this case, I assume a lack thereof, that seems to be the justification for consistent and decades' worth of neglect of our infrastructure. But if you look at the importance of what infrastructure is to our community and this country, the US has been in decades' worth of neglect. In fact, the current budget for the nation only accounts 2.5% for infrastructure. Fullerton, we spend way more on that, 10% on infrastructure. What are we getting for that, sir? I'd like to know, if we're spending money, what does that money equate to for us? How does that transition for us? I know the metric of what it costs for, you know, a million or whatever it is per mile of road, but I'd like to see a better scope, or, you know, I assume we're going to get to that, of what that money that we've spent over these few years got the city, how far along it got us. If indeed it's not enough, and we cry, it's because of the lack of revenue, that just can't be the excuse for me, right? If it's decades of neglect, shouldn't we, as a city, then, we, as a staff, figure it out along the way how to make an adjustment, get more for that dollar, or find more inventive ways to use that money? So that's what I look forward to in this presentation, not necessarily a history of how this city was mismanaged.
So, with that, Mr. Grantham, we provided you a little bit of a break in your presentation, and we look forward to it.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? One more comment. Yeah, just on that expenditure side, I know the last six, seven years that I've been involved with the city, you know, we're talking about what have we used the revenue for other expenses? And I know it hasn't been a lot of public safety because we, well, it has been, but we still keep losing our public safety to other cities because we're one of the bottom-paying cities in that area. And I know we've lost some other people to other cities for a higher pay, so I understand that we want to know what the expenditures went, but I think moving forward, at least from what I see, we're, we've been expending a lot of revenue, yes, but I don't think, knowing what we did in the past, is going to help us as much as we think to figure out how to fix our streets. And I know, like Mr. Jung said, I do want to see how we maybe get more creative with it, with moving forward with the revenue that we do get. But anyway, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just to give David one more minute to break, I think, you know, as he goes forward, we'll bring the whole story together, but it also is, you know, finances in the state of California and for cities, especially when redevelopment was in the mix, is always an interesting mix, because, Mr. Mayor, you talk about, you know, property taxes, and over 70% of property taxes paid by residents in Fullerton go to support education. You know, we get about 15.64%, the rest of it goes to a lot of other entities. And the person living next door to you may be paying, you know, $75 to the city while you're paying 750 or 7,500, so it really differentiates there. But it also points that, you know, each council has a decision at the time that they're, you know, on the dais. And that's what we want to bring it forward to, and at the end, we're going to be bringing to you several decisions based on the factors that we're at now. You know, we cannot control the fact that 30 years ago, there was a decision made, but we are living that fact. So, as David goes through, at the end, we're going to be bringing to the entire council a series of decisions based on our overall revenues, expenditures as they stand now, and decisions that need to be made in order to, you know, address the deficiency in the PCI, the pavement condition index.
Yes, and one last adder to that, gas taxes were always intended to provide a rich source of revenue for this, and they have been plundered and pilfered numerous times by other levels, government as well.
Absolutely, and nowadays, we face the fact that, you know, we drive hybrid, we drive electrical vehicles, and, you know, so gas tax per mileage may not be generating as much as we thought it was in the past, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Now that we've lost your train of thought.
Oh, no, I'm picking these points on purpose, so. All right, so I'm off the history. Now we're on to street design, and I've had a lot of conversations with people, and I want to kind of bring up to the point of what really goes into doing a street rehabilitation project. A lot of people think it's just the physical construction, and that's just the cost. Well, obviously, it isn't. We've got the, I put the four main phases of a project up on the screen. The thing we want to point out is, if you, you know, a lot of times, the rule of thumb is 10 to 15% of a construction job is the design cost, especially if you use a consultant. And, you know, any job, a significant street job requires at least a geotech and a survey consultant. Then we go to bidding. Bidding is very specific. We release it to contractors, we have to follow the public contract code, we're using taxpayer dollars. So there's a lot of checks and balances when we're using taxpayer dollars, and the public contract code is used in that manner. So we will open it up to the qualified bidders, we will have a bid opening, and then we'll review all the bidders, make sure they are responsible, they know what they're doing, they have all the licenses, et cetera, and then we bring it to council recommending award. And we go to construction. And again, it's more than just paying the contractor out in the field. We have to do testing, we have to make sure the materials they're bringing in is correct, they're compacting it correctly. We have to go pay for inspection. The project engineers need to manage the project, there's a lot of paperwork. And then we have to account for contingencies. We're doing really well lately with our minimal contingencies, but as soon as you open the ground up, you just don't know what you're going to get, and there's always going to be some extra costs involved when doing construction. And then finally, closeout, there's some costs related there. So, typical street rehab work. Again, a lot of people think, hey, it's just the black top that we got to fix. Well, this is what we look at when we do a street job. Trees are getting old and mature, and they're creating problems, so we have to fix the sidewalk, we have to fix the curb and gutter. We are required by federal law to put in curb ramps and also fix the sidewalk. Spandrels are getting beat up because they're old. Then we get into the pavement rehab. So, a project like this ends up looking like this. So it certainly does expand the cost of a project and the needs of a project. So I'm going to go over our typical rehabilitation methods. The first three I'm going to talk about are kind of the standard, they've been around for a long time, and then I'll get into some other ones. So Slurry Seal, that's what you, it's a very thin layer of fine aggregate and oil that you put down on a street that's in good condition. It replaces the little fines that have been washed away over time, and it helps seal the street again. This is something we, any city would love to be able to do on a regular basis, it's something that needs to be done on a regular basis. Grind and Overlay, where we take off the top two inches or so of a street, it's called the wearing course, and it's intended to break down, and then we put a new two inches of asphalt back on the pavement. There's areas that we might do some digouts, what we call, go down a little bit deeper, but that's- But that's kind of the second kind of original or standard option of working. And then there's reconstruction, where you essentially remove everything, truck it away, bring new stuff in, and build it all back up again. And a lot of times, that's done because, over time, the pavement sections, the number of trucks, the weight of vehicles, the number of vehicles on the road, the existing pavement section is too thin structurally to handle that amount of vehicles, which is one of the reasons why the street broke down in the first place. So you have to go down deeper. You're seeing it on Commonwealth now. We're going down almost 18 inches of removal and replacement of materials. It's a very thick section. Now, there's some more and more modern, for lack of a better term, methods that we're actually implementing in the city. I've been implementing these over the last few years. The full one is full-depth reclamation. What it is, is a substitute for the reconstruction method. So instead of digging everything out and trucking it away, we're actually reusing the existing materials in place. So the existing asphalt, the existing base is getting pulverized, it's getting mixed, and it's getting mixed in place, and we get to reuse it. So you're reducing the amount of trucks, you're reducing the amount of waste, you're reducing the amount of material that has to be brought in. And so it's a cheaper method than the reconstruction method. And we've done that on a number of streets in the city.
David, question for you.
Yeah.
And if you're going to get there, please let me know. But, you know, I was curious if you had maybe a chart that indicates percentage of streets that require reconstruction versus slurry seal versus, you know, like a grind and repair? Is that outlined later in here?
Pretty much right here, to a degree.
Gotcha.
The very good streets, typically, you don't need to do anything for a while. The good streets, that's the ones you would want to slurry seal. We typically don't slurry seal arterial roads, we'll slurry seal the local roads. When you get into the fair and poor, you definitely can do grind and overlay. The poor is dependent on how thick your existing pavement is when you get to the poor condition. So the poor may be grind and overlay, or it might be a reconstruct. And the same thing, you get into the very poor, depending on what your existing pavement section is, you might get away with a grind and overlay, but it's more than likely you budget for a reconstruct.
And so, David, on your full reclamation, is that for the very poor or the poor when you're doing this?
That depends on the existing pavement section, again. Typically, it's the very poor. But the problem we have in our, I'll just get to it now. The big problem we have with our residential streets is, back in the 50s and 60s when they were built, you look at the as-built plans, you look at the borings that we do, it's about two or three inches of asphalt over maybe two or three inches of base if you're lucky. The standard we have today is a minimum four inches of AC over six inches of base, and I actually want to change that to five inches of AC over five inches of base. So you try and, you know, if you want to grind off those two to three inches, you're not left with anything, you know, that will last long term. From an engineering and a geotechnical perspective, that's not really what you want to do. So that's the struggle you come at. You look at these older local streets that are breaking down, the preferred method is to reconstruct. Now, I'll go into other stuff as we go along, but, you know, to be, that's why we do full depth reclamation. We can mix that stuff and create new base.
So if you were going to grind, and you see an older street, beginning the grind, you would see that there'd be nothing at the bottom of it, so that would prohibit you from doing that grind, because then you're going to hit dirt in essence?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, there's always exceptions to every rule, in general. That's kind of where we're at. Okay, another newer method, at least in Orange County or in Fullerton, asphalt rubber aggregate membrane, ARAM. Caltrans uses the acronym SAMI. Basically, it's an oily mixture. It's a membrane rubber, it's got rubberized, old rubber tires in it that they spray on the surface of the roadway. And then you can either put an asphalt cap on top of it, or you can put slurry seal on top of it. And the idea behind this membrane is that it helps stick together what's underneath to kind of hold it together, and it also helps mitigate what we call reflective cracking. So if you have a street that's cracked and broken up, and you put two inches of asphalt on top of it, within probably three months, you'll see the cracks come through again. This helps minimize the ability for those cracks to migrate through to the top.
Is that what they call a cape seal?
It's very similar. Yeah, very, very similar. Yeah. So here's an example of what we would think, how we would use it on the local residential streets. The preferred use is on the streets that are in better condition, but certainly, when you talk to the salesman and the marketing people, you could absolutely use it on the poor streets. That, to me, is an engineering judgment call, but I certainly wouldn't exclude it as an option. It does have a pretty significant history of use, but it's really been used in LA County and Caltrans. The use in Orange County is pretty minimal, surprisingly. I did take this method to INRAC back in February, as I wanted their input as to whether this is a method that we should bring to council as a way of addressing our street needs, as a way of providing a slightly better-conditioned road and extending our budget so we can address more roads with this method. But we do have pros and cons with this method. So I said, you know, the cost is one thing. If you have a decent-sized project, certainly, you can extend the amount of work you can do with this type of method.
I have a question involving cost. Since it's consistently 3/8 inch thick that this is utilized, you should, there should be at least a ballpark idea of what the current cost is per square foot or square yard?
I get to that.
Okay.
You're ahead of me. So we have some pros, we have some cons. I really do want to point out the cons here, because this is, to be honest, a method that I think, you know, we're going to suggest as a possible solution or a method as we go along this presentation. It certainly doesn't produce the finished surface that a grind and overlay or reconstruct will. It's not going to be as smooth. Whatever the roughness of your existing road is, it will continue to have that roughness or rigibility. We are still required to do concrete work, and that's a significant cost to a project. And the other concern that I have, and INRAC made some comments on, is the fact that ARAM, the nature of the membrane, it minimizes water transferring from the surface into the ground. That's good. But now, we have a lot of water mains that have main breaks. And what happens when the water tries to go the other direction? We've had issues in the past when there used to be the old pavement fabric was used on streets, where the main would break, and it would travel under the fabric and then pop out, and you couldn't figure out where the break was. So there is a concern with using this, and essentially, INRAC said, we support use of this method. However, we don't support it on roads that have not had their main replaced. So here are the costs. These are budgetary costs that we use. These are what I call fully burdened costs. So we talked about the design, bidding, construction. All those costs are built into this cost per mile. The ARAM is still somewhat expensive compared to just slurry seal. But as you can see, if you compare ARAM on local roads to, say, full-depth reclamation, you could get approximately double your amount of miles of streets that you could do with this method. These costs are only going up every year. Every year, I have one of my engineers go through our previous bid comparisons, and we update these, and they are continually going up every year. And one thing I do want to point out to the public is this note on the side. People are always shocked by the cost. And when you're dealing with taxpayer money, you're dealing with what's called prevailing wage. The intent, it's a federal requirement. The state of California sets guidelines of different working classifications, people who work in the field. They must be paid a specific wage, and they must be paid a specific fringe benefit payment. That increases our costs, labor costs, three to four times. So, for example, if you wanted to paint your house, you may pay someone $20, $25 an hour. We're paying someone $60 to $70 an hour when everything's all said and done. The labor costs are incredible on a project. And the idea here is to try to create a more level playing field for the contractors. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Could you expand also on cost per mile? Can you more accurately determine what that is? Is that a single lane, or would that be?
Okay. No, when I look at the local roads, the assumption is that the road, majority of our local roads are 32 feet wide of paving. So it's 36 foot wide from curb face to curb face. And that's what we base this budgetary number on, is that area.
Okay, so 32 feet wide by a mile.
Right. And then the arterials, trying to remember, I think we base it on an 80-foot wide right away, so it's probably a 60, 70-foot paved width. Okay. Nope, I wanted to stop right there, pause right there, if you have any other questions, comments.
Well, I'm glad that INRAC at least understood the potential problems of having water main breaks and the way that that transfers, the inability to be able to locate a problem. This is why, back in 2013 even, I spoke with our city engineer at the time about the need to have our street repairs last longer, for us to have some lasting benefit from them. And it was at that point where we started to prioritize reconstruction of streets only where the utilities underneath were being replaced at the same time. And the deterioration that was happening from us going back over new pavement and having to cut and do repairs or access utilities was a major problem at that time. And I think, at least in my experience, we're doing a much better job of trying to coordinate those things. How do you feel the city has progressed on that priority? Is that, have we adhered pretty well to that?
Yeah, actually, I'll touch on that in a little bit, so maybe I can defer my answer when I get there.
You know, David, question. You talked about some of these, I guess, the repairs, and I guess, you know, to the mayor's point about, you know, the overlap between some of the underlying infrastructure and then roads and streets on top. I know one of the projects that's ongoing right now is the SciFi project, and I'd be curious to note any additional, you know, impact that that's caused on the streets. Obviously, I know I've been out and seen some of it, but I'm curious to see, or curious to understand, and you may get to that later, but you'd be curious to understand what additional costs that's created for the city in terms of, you know, previously unbudgeted or unexpected expenses.
I don't touch on that. I'm trying to think if it's worthwhile addressing that now or a little bit later. You know, the whole, the SciFi project is not, basically, is not supposed to cost the city any dollars. Supposed to. As far as construction goes, at this point, we have not incurred any additional costs related to construction from them. We have the first essentially project coming up, Brookhurst, that will be in the same location as SciFi. Per the agreement, they have said that, you know, they will cover any related costs related to their facilities. So at this time, I'm not aware of the construction cost will be increased to the city. Now, we're opening bids tomorrow, and we'll see if any of these costs, you know, concrete-related work has gone up significantly or not. But the way the specs are written, SciFi is responsible for all related costs, more damage that they may incur.
Yeah, so we're able to push that back to them? Okay, thanks.
David, if I may, so when we have a utility come in, come in, cut the street, then they patch it back, that weakens the whole structure of that street, correct? I mean, it maybe increases the speed at which it deteriorates or cracks if it's not fixed properly?
It certainly can. You know, if you trench a street that's in good condition, your trench is going to, you know, your joint conditions are going to be a lot better, the trench should last longer. If you trench a street that is already breaking apart, certainly, you're not helping the situation. The trench itself should be fine. Is it going to exasperate the damage that's done either side of the trench? The possibility exists, absolutely.
Because I've often traveled, you know, here in other cities where you're traveling, and the street's in fair condition, then you see where they dug a square or rectangle, and a lot of times, that's below the level of the street.
And that's a trench failure. You know, when our utility companies, when that happens, we call them out, they're required to go fix their trench failures.
Yeah, because to Mr. Dunless's point, SciFi is going to dig those small trenches on the side, and then at some point, their recapping of that fails, it may start deteriorating the asphalt that touches that.
That is an unknown at this point. The material they're using, you know, obviously, staff did their due diligence based on, you know, new technology, talking with other cities, other engineers. You know, it's a small trench, it's placed up against the gutter to minimize any potential impacts. Time is going to tell, unfortunately, on that. But we do have a five-year bond?
Part of the amendment process. Yes.
So I shouldn't have said that?
No.
Okay, sorry.
And then one last question. You talked about water, oops, water main leaks up. Is somewhere in there, are you going to talk about the, is there different levels of water main breaks, like a blowout versus a crack, or are they all the same? Is there a category that one damages a street more than another?
Well, yeah, I mean, absolutely. If you have a bigger pipe that blows, you're going to get a lot more water. Anything that's in a high-pressure zone, you're going to get a lot more damage. If you have a water service that breaks, a one-inch little copper pipe, certainly, the damage is going to be greatly reduced.
So I don't know if you can answer this, but over there of Yale and Nutwood, there was a blowout or something, and literally, the new patch that you put on was 36 by 30, I think. What was that considered? Was that a main blowout?
Oh, yeah. That would be a main.
That would be a main blowout that we would classify.
Absolutely. Water is very damaging.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That street, if you walk down that street, every 10 feet, you see another patch. All right, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, one of the items that, when we have a new street, what we do, try to do is a moratorium on any road cuts into it. So as Councilmember Silver was talking about, any trenching and all that stuff, if there's a brand-new street and it's 100 PCI, there is a moratorium that we put on that says, hey, you cannot trench in this area for a period of, I don't know if it's three or five years, but we try to get as much time out of that before you do cut in. Now, eventually, you're going to have to cut in and do that, because utilities are already, are always, you know, trying to upgrade and do things and repair things. And then there's also a requirement that if you do have to trench, maybe it's not just that patch, but you have to, you know, repave the entire side of the street or something like that. The, going back to the issue on SciFi, they most certainly have a easier time on newer streets because they can make a cleaner cut. But as with a lot of our streets with a poorer condition, yeah, the infill material and their patching looks sloppy. And that is one thing that we're working with them on. But also, I want to thank the council, because we did have an interpretation issue which could have seriously increased our cost of doing business, because there was an interpretation by the company that, no, if we weren't widening, if we were just doing our normal street maintenance projects and all that stuff, then we would have to bear that cost. So that was, if the public and the council remember, a delay in the project as we went back and forth and eventually settled again, that, no, if we need to do work, you get out of our way, you protect your own stuff in place. So we do appreciate the city council's support on that as we go forward in the project. But, yeah, so going forward, you know, it is a new technology. It is something that we will see if, you know, three years, five years from now, there are failures due to the material or due to the cuts in the spandrels, which are the cross gutters against, across streets. But it is But it is kind of somewhat the price of technology in getting the free fiber for our, our customers, and that was one of the things we were balancing at that time, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure. I had a question to ask the city manager, if you could answer for me, sir. Let's say five million dollars is our infrastructure budget for the streets. Our, the director said that it's ten to fifteen percent is consulting fees, right?
The design of a project.
Design of the project, correct? Works to about three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Could we not hire two employees for that to do that? Do we have to have consultants on that?
I would open that. I would ask the public works director or principal engineer.
I'll touch on that as, as I get to it, actually.
Very good. Thank you.
You guys are reading my mind. I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing. You don't really want to be there, in my mind. Okay, ready? Funding, okay. I want to make this clear, a lot of residents don't necessarily understand the nuances of the funding from the city. Some people think there's just one big pot of money and why can't you just move money around and, and do street work? We have a lot of different funds that have very specific restrictions on them. The revenue is generated a specific way and can only be spent a specific way. And so like, items like the sanitation fund, sewer water, park dwelling for sure, cannot be used on the streets. So it greatly reduces the amount of money the city takes in. Certainly, it restricts how much of that money can actually be used on street projects. Also, the amount of work that we need to do in the city of Fullerton is considered maintenance. We're not widening our roads. We are maintaining what is there. And because of that, with the exception of community development block grants that we apply for every year, grants are not available for routine maintenance. They are available for widening. For example, OCTA has their Project O. They have the arterial capacity, freeway arterial, and intersection capacity enhancement programs. They have a fifty percent grant out there, so if we apply, if we wanted to widen a street, we can apply for, for funding for them. They'll give us fifty percent of the cost to do the widening portion, not the rest of the maintenance. But we have to come up with the other fifty percent of that. Traffic signal work, we do a lot of grants through OCTA for those improvements again, and it's a twenty percent match. Active transportation, those projects, again, are improvements to bicycle facilities or sidewalks. They only pay for the bike lane, not nothing else. So we will be responsible for anything else that's in the project other than, say, the bike lane itself. We do partner with other cities. We, our city boundary, obviously, we, we bound with, you know, Brea, Placentia, Buena Park. And our city boundary sometimes has a very unusual location. A lot of times, it's the middle of a street. So we try to coordinate our projects with each other, so we're just dealing, working on the same street at the same time. But each city only pays for the work that's being done in their own city. The other cities are not going to help each other out. So, for example, right now, I'm partnering with Anaheim. I piggybacked on their project where they're doing down on Raymond at the ninety-one, and I extended their project limits into our city to take advantage of their project. I still had to reimburse them for their design, I still have to reimburse them for all the construction and inspection costs. They are not willing to give us a freebie, unfortunately.
David, and I don't know if this is a question or a comment for David or the city manager, but if I'm not mistaken, there's been zero, you know, funding from the general fund towards roads or, you know, road streets or infrastructure like the past two years, like zero dollars.
Well, there's been funding from the...
Aside from like a capital asset sale.
Property sales, Rule Twenty-Eight, correct, absolutely. We do not have a ongoing general fund commitment. Yes, general fund dollars are spoken for otherwise.
Okay. And before you move on, I also have one question. Sorry, I know you're excited to move on.
No, it's fine.
Just to, to clarify, on the, the grants, some of them are specific grants that maybe we, we don't qualify for, but some also require matching funds or are specific to a certain, like you said, the, the bike lanes. Does that, does that mean that sometimes we don't apply for a grant because maybe we don't qualify or we don't have the matching funds for? Or if the road needs, if we need to improve bike lanes, but we don't have the money to fix the rest of it, we won't apply for those grants, correct?
It's a case-by-case situation. I know that we, in the past two years, we had a, we've got a project on Nutwood by Cal State Fullerton to provide, actually partnered with Cal State Fullerton to provide a Class One off-road bike lane, and we applied for the ATP money. You get scored was whether you can, are you contributing other funds to this project? And we couldn't. And so we, you know, that hurt our scoring compared to everyone else, so we didn't get to the final round, we weren't awarded any money for that. So we try where it makes sense, where we think it makes sense, but there are absolutely situations where we're not going to apply because we don't have the, the matching money.
One, just follow-up question to the mayor pro tem's question on the general fund. Why is it historically, from a budgeting point of, point of view, that we haven't dedicated any additional funds from the general fund?
Because they are prioritized for other uses.
Wait, you know, I guess a question. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead, you've got the follow-up.
Oh, thank you. I guess a comment to that, because, you know, one of my concerns, and I know in the past, you know, I think, four months that I've been on council, we've seen about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in discretionary, you know, consulting contracts that have come forward, and fortunately, we, we've been able to, you know, to, to shut those down. But I think if you look back another year and a half, you've seen a little over a million dollars in contracts or consulting assignments that were approved. And so I, I think what's, what's really interesting is, you know, in looking at the budget, I mean, and I think what, you know, I think what I see and what I, what I hear in, in speaking with people, is people are so frustrated, we're, we're not putting that money right back in streets. Now, you can argue, or you could say easily that, hey, this is, you know, obviously, this is a, you know, probably a seven, eight, nine-figure, you know, cost, I think, once all in. You know, but the reality is, that, you know, one point seven million in discretionary spending, you know, could have just as easily been invested in someone's neighborhood, and that would have made an immediate difference, you know, from the, from the time it was completed. And so I think, I think we really just need to, yeah, there's, there's, obviously, there are a lot of things that, you know, we've seen thus far that we'll continue to see this evening, but I think we just need a fundamental change in, in how we look at, you know, operating, you know, the, the city, because clearly, you know, what's, what's gotten us here to this point has not and will not were going forward.
Correct. And at the end, when we talk about funding decisions and general fund funding and reprioritization, we're going to kind of deal on that. You know, going back and looking at some of the other stuff, you know, there is a priority. So, for example, when we were looking at a fiscal sustainability study, we were asking to take that funding from the city's contingency reserve versus any ongoing. What we are trying to look for is ongoing general fund revenues to support the need for streets, because we need, you know, five million, six million, eight million every year for that, and that's some of those discussions we're going to have towards the end of the meeting, so.
All right. Mr. Mayor. I had one concern about partnerships with other neighboring cities, you had said. Rosecrans in particular right now. City of Buena Park has done what I perceive is their side of rosecrans.
Correct.
Did they act as a good partner and let us know? Because our side looks terrible.
Nope.
So when it's cannabis in their neighborhood, every city council person in Buena Park comes here to speak. But they're playing common courtesy to let us know that they're trying to dunk on us over rosecrans. They can't do that.
That was unfortunate.
Unfortunately, correct.
I, I got a set of plans at a hundred percent, and it was too late for me to reallocate funding to partner with them on rosecrans. That, that is one of the reasons I suggested rosecrans for next fiscal year.
Thank you.
So, this is what we anticipate pending council approval. The proposed street rehabilitation budget for next fiscal year, starting in July. And this is based on estimates provided by the state and the county for the revenue we are going to receive for gas tax, SB one and M two. So the column on the left is what is estimated the city, as a total, will receive. The community development block grant that was, has been awarded to engineering by the committee, so that number is final. That is the number we will get. The next column is department allocations, and I kind of, I explain underneath in the footnotes why there are allocations taken out of gas tax and goes to other divisions in public works. Now, all these, this money that's taken out is still used on our roadway system because we still have infrastructure and we still have needs on the, in our street system that have to be addressed. The big ticket you'll see there is the three point three five five. The vast majority of that goes to our maintenance department. And a lot of that money is broken down into, yes, that we got the labor costs of our staff over in maintenance. We also have the streetlight costs, the repair and the electric, electric bill over there. And there's a few.
More.
I lost my notes. There's a couple of other big-ticket items that go related to gas tax in our, in our maintenance department. Certainly, the pothole repair, street striping, signs, all those other items are included, you know, is in the operations of our maintenance department as it comes to streets. So the bottom line is on the column on the right in blue, that is, at the current moment, what we believe, or what I am budgeting for the CIP street rehabilitation for next fiscal year, a little over five million dollars. I wasn't planning on stopping there, but do you want me to? Okay. All right. So that's what we've got. Where are we going to go? Pavement management plan, otherwise known as a PMP. Some people are aware of this, some people not, so let me give a quick overview of what the PMP is. Is essentially, it's an inspection of every single public street in the city. Our major roads are visually inspected every two years, and our local roads must be visually inspected every six years. The objective is to essentially tell us how our street, our pavement conditions are. It helps planning, it helps budgeting, it helps figure out where we want to put our money, what money we have of it, where we might want to put it. It's also a requirement of OCTA to, to still, to maintain our eligibility to receive the M two local fair share dollars, which are right here, the M two local fair share. If we don't do this report and submit it, we don't get the money. This report is done by a consultant because they have to be certified by OCTA. So the PMP provides what's called a pavement condition index, a PCI for each street. Essentially, it's a, it's a scale, a rating from zero to one hundred. Zero being bad, one hundred being very good. So the fewer the problems you have, the higher PCI rating you have. And the little chart on the right is something that comes up a lot in PMPs. And in the intent of a PMP is really to keep your PCI rating up. So they want, you want to have a high percentage of very good and good streets. So they recommend, and for obvious reasons, that you spend money on the streets that are in good or very good condition because it's cheap to do it and it extends the life of those streets. As, if you wait until the streets become fair, poor, very poor, the drop-off in quality is steep and the cost to address it greatly increases. And that's something we are obviously facing in Fullerton right now. So on the left side shows you the, the PCI ratings of what was considered very poor, poor, very good, very good. And as I said before, the very beginning, when I showed the pie charts, how we have an unbalanced breakdown, our citywide rating is actually fair. It's sixty-three point eight, and not a lot of people would probably argue against that, but that's where our calculations place us. Now, the graph shows that if we continue with the type of funding that we're getting at the moment, our PCI, so in other words, our pavement conditions are only going to decrease over time. And just for point of reference, I've looked at other cities' PMPs, and they all say the same thing. If you don't spend more money, your pavement conditions are going to get worse. Some negligibly worse, others a lot worse. But there's kind of a, there's kind of a theme going in Orange County with pavement conditions. Unfortunately, we're the lead. Okay, so what have we done?
If we can go back to the previous slide for one second. Can you explain to the viewing public at home why the steep drop-off between 2024 and 2025?
More than likely, we're just going to have a, a lot of streets flipping from poor to very poor. Category.
And I think, Mr. Mayor, David and Meg can correct me. Because of council decisions over the last three years where we've added property sales, the two point four million from Rule Twenty-Eight funds, I think that's the reason why we go from the sixty-three point eight to the sixty-four. So we have a, a brief upblip, but that's what you, what, what it shows when you invest a little bit more money. And we did make those decisions to invest a little bit more money from those funding sources, but then, based on the continually funding at a five point five million dollar range, it quickly decreases again.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
I'm sorry. I, I can't give credit to previous councils on this. We've got a current state senator that was recalled over SB one, or what the public should be familiar as, the gas tax. It accounts for nearly all of our infrastructure allocation right now. I wonder what would have happened if we didn't, if he didn't pass that bill? If he wasn't recalled and paid a political price for it? Where would our roads be now? So let's not give credit to folks that just neglected this over and over again. Now we've got to hump the bill.
Let's move on to what we, as a city, have been trying to do to help the situation that we're in. So Mayor touched on this before. Our current practice is to combine, at the very least, on our local streets where we're doing utility projects to do the street improvements. It does help extend our street repair budget because by default, the sewer and water utilities, which pays out of their separate funds, the water fund and sewer enterprise fund, to do their work, are required to repair the street because they're trenching the street. So they contribute a portion of that money to help with the street repair above their pipe. So that, that helps a little bit to extend our street improvement budget. It also takes away the fact that, you know, we're going into a street and we should have no need to go back into a street anytime soon because we've done all the work on that I do kind of want to talk about, a little bit about the priority list I got here. I meant to do it a little bit earlier. I'll, I'll step back. What we've done this, and a lot of people ask, you know, why are you picking those streets? So the local streets, as you can see, we, we try to combine it. The arterial streets, I, we look at utilities, but we don't necessarily use that as a governing factor as to why we pick arterial streets. The last couple of years, what I've done is broken down our budget by taking all of the SB one funds, and I put that on arterial streets, and the remaining budget I put towards local streets. And if you look at the work, and since... And if you look at the work, and since SB one's been in place since about twenty eighteen, when you look at the streets that we've done, we've been on the east side, we've been in the middle of the, the city, and now we're proposing to go on the west side. So, as far as how do I choose the streets or how do I recommend the streets to be moved, arterial streets to, to be worked on? That's how I've basically programmed the last couple of years, is trying to be equitable throughout the city. There are a lot of streets I could pick from, obviously, but I don't wanna focus on one side of the city versus the other side of the city. So, I'm trying to work my way around the city, trying to be as equitable as possible. That doesn't really work necessarily with the water and sewer projects because I'm taking their priorities where they need to go in and do their priority work. And then I'm fitting my budget and picking the streets that I can fix on top of their projects. So, it's just wherever those street, their, their projects are, that's where I'm going in to do their work, or to do our work. Okay, moving on from that. City manager mentioned the sale of the surplus property and we took a hundred percent of that revenue and put it back into streets. Those projects were Bray Boulevard. So, it was a combination of residential and arterial streets. Bray Boulevard, Maple Avenue, Jacaranda area, what I call Little Chapman, um, from Basque to Euclid. And then, like I said, Brookhurst, which we are opening bids next, well, tomorrow. Also, the relatively new ordinance, which creates the infrastructure fund. So, there is a baseline of revenue. Anything above that, at least fifty percent of that revenue goes into the new infrastructure fund. And we're expecting about four hundred thousand dollars next fiscal year. Now, if you're paying close attention, which I'm sure you are, you'll notice that I did not list the infrastructure fund as part of the street rehabilitation for next year. And the reason is that we've had internal discussions and at this moment in time, we would be bringing a recommendation to council to consider that we take the four hundred dollars from next fiscal year and we add that to our annual curb gutter sidewalk repair project. So, we would do double our, the amount of work hopefully that we can do on fixing our sidewalks. And the reason behind that is to try and reduce the liability claims that we're getting related to our sidewalks. Now, the following years, we can, we'll relook at how we would use, how much is in the infrastructure fund and how much, how we'd reutilize that fund. But for next year, I just wanted to explain why that wasn't listed in proposed budget. Finally, partnering with County of Orange. City manager has been, over the past year and a half or so, talking with the powers that be at the County of Orange. And hopefully, um, we're making headway on getting some funding from them that we can, we'll put a hundred percent towards road improvements.
Yeah. And Mr. Mayor, members of council on that, that kinda goes back to the, there's two things on that. One, um, the long-term discussions go to the SB one funding. So, County of Orange is generally an urban county. But the SB one funding is set up based on the HUTA or Highway Users Tax Allocation methodology, which is from probably the sixties or even earlier. And it awards the county more funding. In fact, they get dozens of millions or more in SB one funding for about the same amount of mileage as we get. So, um, we've been talking as cities to the county to say, hey, we need to have some of that funding because it's not fair that the county gets it all. So, those are still long-term discussions with the county going forward. The other part is that we will be getting a million dollars from the County of Orange that we are proposing to use for the portion of Orange Thorpe from Lemon to Harbor Boulevard, which is a notoriously bad section. It includes the median replacement. So, uh, that is because at the beginning of the pandemic, when the county was shutting down the cold weather armory shelters and all that stuff, we struck a deal with the county to say, okay, we'll let you move the homeless, the persons experiencing homelessness that are currently at the cold weather shelter over to the, uh, to the Independence Park Gymnasium for a period of time. But we also asked for a million dollars in road funds. So, they are programming that into their twenty one, twenty two budget. And I do believe that that project is slated for spring of twenty two for that section of Orange Thorpe, so.
Yeah, I can move that up.
Mr. City Manager, you mentioned something about the County of Orange. Very curious to get some information, or if you would, from the county. I'd like to know what our section of the county or our district gets in reference to the other four. Cause if infrastructure funding is provided equal amounts, let's say to South County, which is far newer, doesn't require as much of it, than they would give us, which is far older and requires much more maintenance and repair, I would find that not equitable at all. It wouldn't make much sense. So, if we can get that information, I'd certainly be grateful because it seems to me County of Orange sits on a, a wealth of money and they allocate it basically from a drip, as far as I could tell. So, if we can get that information, know where to advocate our supervisor accordingly, I'd certainly appreciate it, sir.
Uh, yes, we can get that information for you.
Okay. So, uh, you asked about not using consultants. Since I, I have taken over managing the CIP and the fact that I came from a very heavy design background, I am, I have implemented doing maintenance, our maintenance projects in-house. They are relatively straightforward. It's very important, I believe it's very important that our engineers get very familiar with the design in-house. I feel we do a better job in-house for these maintenance projects because we have a better feel for the city. We understand the needs of different areas. And quite frankly, I, I want them done in-house. And it, it certainly saves us cost to do it in-house. Now, the more complex projects, whether it's some liability or increased liability that's related to it, those are the ones I will have an outside consultant look at and provide on that. But the more straightforward sewer replacements, street replacement projects, I absolutely have those done in-house by our engineers.
David, let me, let me ask you a question. One thing that I get asked a lot is where the, kind of the cutoff is between work that we're doing in-house and work that then gets ventured out to, you know, say like a larger construction company. Can you kind of break down what the crews are doing in-house versus outsourced?
So, the last project that we outsourced was actually Euclid Street that's being under construction right now. And the reason we did that is because there's sewer, street and water. Now, the water was done in-house, but I took the sewer and did it, I outsourced it because the project initially was to replace the siphon under the channel. And that's tricky. And I thought it was a better option to have a consultant spend more time and have their expertise design and deal with that design than in-house. What do you mean by routine ma, the actual work?
Right.
Oh.
As you'll see, Fullerton employees fixing potholes and things like that.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the, the, our maintenance crews do a fantastic job with what they, what they have available to them. But they can only, they typically only do the small repairs, like the water main blowouts. They'll do a patch that's thirty by thirty. Once you get beyond that, um, we have to go to an outside consultant also, or ask contractor. Also, there is the public contract code that as soon as you hit sixty thousand dollars, you're supposed to have your maintenance crew bid against outside construction because of use of, use of funds. And, you know, once you have a significant CIP project, our, our crews don't have the time or the ability to do it. So, we, we have to go outside to do all the concrete work and the, the mass amount of paving and the mass amount of grinding. It just, it's, just can't be done in-house.
And, and while you're on that topic, uh, I think it might be good to share with the public just how large that universe is. Uh, over the last eight to ten years, how many different contractors have prevailed on bids and completed streets, reconstruction and repairs for Fullerton? How, how large is that universe?
Good boy. That's a good question. Um, let's just say on the, on the, I mean, let me, let me answer it in a slightly different way.
Yeah, not a specific, but at least a ballpark.
Yeah, I was gonna say, in the last, the bids we've had, the last few projects, we've had fifteen plus every time bidding on the project. There's a lot of people out there wanting the work, to work in Fullerton. Yes, we get a lot of repeat people. Um, there are companies that kind of understand how to work in Fullerton, for lack of a better term, or they're already working in Fullerton, so their bids might be a little bit better. So, they end up continuing on working in Fullerton. But it's low bid. So, if they're the low bid and they're qualified, they get the work.
Thanks.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, on that point, um, you'll see repetitive, there's big firms, RJ Noble, All American Asphalt, All American Asphalt South, Benz Asphalt Team, Solely Miller, you know, a bunch of others. Some of it depends also on the availability of their resources. So, All American has an asphalt plant nearby. RJ Noble is based in Orange and so, you know, transportation costs. And those are some of the critical factors that when all other things are considered, the prevailing wage and all that stuff, kinda makes it better for some of those bigger companies. Also, a lot of times, we wanna ensure that those companies that are here are insured bonded to the greatest extent. And so, you can do sometimes a pre-qualification to ensure those levels because the last thing you wanna do is get into a, you know, repetitive dispute over change orders or other issues like that, be in court. Um, I've been in other cities where we've had that unfortunately because sometimes the low bidder is, you know, it's the lowest responsible, responsive bidder. But that doesn't mean that they're gonna give you the best work sometimes, so.
I will point out there, over the last year, I have recommended to council that we not award the project to a lowest bidder. Right? And for various reasons, not necessarily street projects, but just CIP projects in general. So, it does happen that we, you know, we will not recommend a certain contractor.
I was trying to get a feel of, you're familiar with the Pareto concept, which is the eighty twenty rule? And whether or not we are comfortable with certain suppliers, contractors? And whether the bulk of our work tends to fall in the hands of, of a handful of, of contractors?
I, I would say over the past two years, it's been pretty varied. Certainly, the last couple of projects, um, for example, Big Ben has got a couple of projects in a row. Not every single project, but they've got a couple in a row. And I think a lot of that has to do with the fact they already here, working on a project.
Right.
So, they were able to use that to their advantage. So.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go down this. So, new developments, standard where I think a lot of cities now, any significant development, we're requiring them to have private streets, so we don't have to deal with them in the future. I've also been working very closely over the last year or so with our consultant geotechnical engineer, trying to get ahead of the game, so to speak, doing a lot of investigation of, especially the arterial streets. So, I can figure out where's the best, what are, what work do these streets need? So, I have a much better way to budget them and figure, and provide recommendations to council as to which streets we want to do. And I like working with this consultant because they do, they're not the standard, oh, rip it out and redo it. They understand the, the needs of a city, the restrictions of a, of a city and what makes sense from a practical standpoint, still meeting geotechnical requirements. So, we've been able to implement newer techniques or grind and overlay type projects rather than rip out and replace. So, it saved us quite a bit of money. And actually saved us some money that in the future, I be able to hopefully do one more project, fund another project of street repair because of those savings. So, we're, we're, we're trying to be innovative. We're trying to implement the, the non, for lack of a term, the non-standard or the typical approaches so we can extend our budget as much as possible. Okay, I had intended to stop there, so are we good? Keep going? Okay, we're getting close. We're getting close. All right, so what we need? All right, so if we look at the PMP recommendations, as I said before, the goal of the PMP is just to raise your PCI score. So, the concept is you address the fair condition streets and you slowly seal the good condition streets. And you kind of ignore the streets that are bad. And the kind of the intent there is you, you really should have a small percentage of streets that are bad to begin with. So, you're just kinda maintaining the good streets and then hopefully you got a little bit extra money. You go take care of some of the bad streets. We're not really in that situation, but that is one of the recommendations that we, we could have a discussion about to move forward. The latest PMP, um, basically, um, recommended that we do a lot of overlay projects to get our PCI up. And they're saying that we need at least eight million a year just to maintain the type of conditions we have right now. So, the PCI is sixty three point eight, the average of the city, just to maintain that. We need eight million a year. I'm looking at five million a year. So, we're not helping. And as you can see, that, they're kinda breaking down the eight million into arterials and locals as three point five and four point five. INRAC, Infrastructure Natural Resources Advisory Committee. It's a nine-member committee of residents of Fullerton that volunteer their time. I am their least staff liaison, so I've been meeting with INRAC for the past two years, I think. And a year and a half or so ago, the previous city council went to, basically tossed INRAC with looking at all our infrastructure needs. And as I said, infrastructure is a lot of different items. And obviously, you know, the obvious recommendations they came out with was, hey, the streets are a big problem and they, they're critical. But they also came up with an infrastructure need of twenty five million dollars per year, an increase of twenty five million dollars a year annually to, uh, deal with our infrastructure. And included in, as part of that twenty five million is an increase of ten million a year going directly to streets. So, the bottom line. We need a long-term, ongoing, continuous, now to infinity, infrastructure budget increase. And following, there was a lot of discussions with INRAC and with, with staff in INRAC as to what the minimum street budget should be. And, but I think staff in INRAC are in agreement that it should be at least a ten million dollar increase. So, we should get to about fifteen million dollars a year. That does not fix the problem overnight by any stretch of the imagination. That means that we will slowly make a difference as we move along. But these are annual dollars, not one time. And I think that's the biggest thing is this, this is certainly not a one-time, short-term investment that will fix this. This is an ongoing, 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 um, budget increase that we need. And that's because infrastructure is just an ongoing item. We have ADA upgrades and federal law that we're gonna have to deal with alleys. You know, I'm sure there's a lot of people who are very frustrated with the condition of their alleys. All our buildings are getting old, sidewalks, trees, parks, storm rings, everything is getting old and we have to address it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
The INRAC committee, um, they had a recommendation that they gave. Do you recall that recommendation, sir? As to how to pay for this approximate increase of ten million dollars a year?
They wanted a special, uh, dedicated sales tax for infrastructure.
And what happened with that tax, sir? Or that recommendation?
Council took a different direction.
So, they scrubbed the recommendation of these nine volunteers that said, this is the way to go to, in lieu of what? What was, what replaced that, sir?
Measure S, the general tax.
Right. And that failed. Thank you.
David, I'd, um, the interesting thing about that is that, uh, just to clarify, that, uh, Measure S was a general, uh, sales tax, um, and it required only 50% plus one to, to pass. A dedicated sales tax would require three-quarters of the voters to, to pass it, so that's about to be a 67% voter approval rating. Um, it was estimated at the time that the voters would not, the polling indicated that there, that the voters would not pass a tax measure at a 67% rate. Further, I wanna point out that the city also, while the infrastructure committee, with all the great work that they did, um, some of, they also split, some of them did come back and endorse a general sales tax. And the reason is because they also had, uh, did not take into account, while they did a, a study on the infrastructure itself, uh, they didn't, not take into account other city needs. We have also a failing police department, a failing fire department, a failing community services, uh, serve, and, and, and all these other things that also are failing. So we have other needs in the city that needed to be addressed and still need to be addressed, while we are now focusing only on infrastructure. We have to be reminded that also we are losing, uh, uh, cutting services in other departments as well. Uh, and 70% of our work is done by employees. We don't, we do not have a city, uh, we, we don't produce anything, we only provide services, so therefore, it, a lot of it is manual labor. And so 70% of our workforce, uh, is what our services pay, uh, what we pay for. And so, uh, all of that, and we are losing, we, we are, compared to other agency, we don't pay enough in, in, uh, in comparison to other agencies. I'm, I'm sure the pay is, is good in certain departments, but it's not in other, so what ends up happening, you lose employees, uh, to other agencies, and we are, uh, I believe we are now at a all-record low as far as employee, uh, count, I think. Um, and so, again, all of that has to be taken into account when making a decision on a budget, and not just looking at a narrow angle, uh, from just infrastructure, so.
Councilmember Zara, is there a question?
No, Mr. Mayor, I've got, I've got a question I'd like to ask.
Okay, sure.
Or perhaps it's more observation commentary. So because of other, uh, increasing requirements that we have, as a city, we don't produce anything, certainly, I don't know many cities that do. Uh, our job is to provide services, that's the point of government. We're not here to create the next iPhone, that's not indicative of, uh, the charter we have. That said, I think if you had an honest conversation with the residents of Fullerton about this money going to a dedicated, uh, tax just to support infrastructure, I bet you would have reached that benchmark. Instead, you went to a pollster, uh, pollster's got the last two elections completely wrong, and they said perhaps a 50-plus-one would carry. Well, folks, I could tell you what the cycle of abuse is. The cycle of abuse is really simple. They blame the victim, somehow the victim was the issue, that's why they got abused. So in this case, government's gonna blame the citizens, oh, you didn't pay enough, your property taxes aren't enough, so we can't do anything for you. And then the other thing is to offer a small gift, a token of our great appreciation for you. So here's a quarter-mile of road that we've done in your backyard, so please, be grateful and send more tide our way. I think if we can amplify for the, just for the courtesy of our citizens, let's not talk about all the things we're doing wrong, from the standpoint of this is wrong, we don't pay our people enough, 'cause I'm certain, sir, there's a segment of our public that would disagree.
May I respond, Mr. Mayor? I mean, this is a study session, so discussions are allowed, I'm assuming?
They are, uh, we would like to hear from the public following the presentation, and they will have-
May I just respond to that one comment? It was addressed to me. Um, the, when we look at, um, our, our city, it is, I was, first of all, I was merely, uh, pointing out facts and not pointing blame. Um, I think we've heard a lot of blame coming, uh, so far, uh, on past councils, et cetera, et cetera. But, um, we, we are, I think our, our public is, is tired of, and I certainly am tired of pointing blame. We need to look at the facts, and then we need to make decisions based on that, and I hope at the end of this session, this council could, um, make some decisions about, um, why we wanna go, and it seems, Mr. Councilmember Jung, uh, I, I appreciate your, uh, defense of, of our infrastructure committee. If you are inclined to bring back and revive the, uh, dedicated sales tax, certainly I would be, uh, open to that discussion.
Okay.
I am as well.
I'm getting, getting to the end, I know you guys are sick of me. All right, some options. Okay, so we can continue with our current approach of how we address the, uh, address the, the street needs in our city, which essentially is targeting the poor and very poor-conditioned streets when we do the utility work. We can change the approach and follow the PMP recommendations, which, again, will raise our PCI, and we're just taking care of the good and fair streets rather than addressing the poor, poor and very poor streets. We can go to a grind and overlay or ARAM rehab only. So we can still follow the water and sewer projects, but we would eliminate reconstruction as a method. Now, at the very bottom, a couple of comments. So from an engineering point of view, make, makes me kind of a little un, little uncomfortable to go that direction. As analogy, um, I'm trying to put it here, it's like you're going from a junker car to a used car. You're painting a car, but you're not taking care of the dings, you're not taking care of the engine, you're not changing the tires. You're making it better, but you're not getting the Cadillac that a reconstruction would. It's gonna push the road down the street a little bit, but only a little bit, and then it'll break down again. And like I said, from an engineering point of view, it's not something that we will be, um, wouldn't be our first, um, recommendation.
And Mr. Member, or, Mr. Mayor, members of council, these are some of the approaches that we'd like to have a, a better discussion, so we wanna hear from you, hear from the public, um, because even though there's, you know, it's not the preferred approach, it is something that may be able to get us through the next, uh, you know, 12 to 15 years, uh, when we do expect financial situations in the city to, uh, you know, be on the upswing. So, um, these are why we're throwing these out, is, you know, how do we get to a point where we can actually afford that, uh, full reconstruction that we know our streets require, uh, but maybe at this time, we just need to make sure that we have, you know, better streets throughout, so.
Okay, and then the final recommendation, um, is to minimize our concrete repairs. Um, this will provide some savings, um, it's certainly not a significant way of saving money, um, but it, it's, you know, we're, we're trying to come up with any potential ways that we can stretch our budget, um, at this point.
You're, you're touching on an area there that I did have a question, and maybe this is the appropriate time. Uh, I know, again, it's a ballpark estimate, because situations vary, but when we do a complete street reconstruction, what percentage typically goes to concrete? Goes to the curbs and the pans and, and any replacements or adjustments, repairs to that as, as a percentage of the total expenditure?
Yeah, I am trying to, you know, wondering, looking back at our estimates, um, thinking on a million dollars, where probably we could be around 10% of our costs on concrete work.
But we would still need to do the curb ramps, so it'd still be a percentage of that.
Yeah, anytime we touch an intersection, Dave, you want us, may say that, you know, we have to upgrade the, put in curb ramps, or even upgrade if there are curb ramps there, and that's something, you know, I wish we could talk to our, uh, federal and state legislators that if there's a curb ramp there and it's doing its job, um, why spend the money to upgrade it to the most current standard when it's a very, very minimal increase, but we do have to spend the money on it?
And, and we do have other associated ADA costs, right, bringing up to speed at least each time that we're modernizing?
Yep. Okay, Ken.
So Mayor, members of council, this is where, you know, we're asking for, uh, discussion, and we'll go through these slides, and then I think that would be the appropriate time to hear public comments before we get back to city council discussion. But, you know, uh, we hear, you know, can we be more efficient in operations to squeeze out funding? Can we reduce our pension obligations to reduce expenditures? Uh, because right now, in looking for the next fiscal year, you know, the largest single increase, and it's, uh, primarily because of, it's some of the last years of CalPERS ramping up the employer contributions due to their, taking down their return on investment. Um, but we're looking at about a $3.2 million pension obligation increase in our general fund. Looking at, you know, do we look and reach out to individual neighborhoods to say, you know, would you like to create an assessment district, which is basically, they would form an assessment district, they would assess themselves in order to improve their own roads, but they would be responsible for the, uh, annual payments on that bonds. Um, you know, drastic things, like do we spin off the library to a special district? Um, in Placentia, the library is a special district, and Buena Park, it is a special district. That would require a vote and, but also a citywide parcel tax to fund the new library. We provide about $4 million in general fund, uh, subsidy or payment for the library, and at that point, if that was successful, then we could utilize that $4 million for ongoing, um, street improvement. So those are some of those options, there's a lot more, Dave, if you wanna advance it. Um, and of course, you know, looking at how do we reprioritize city services to eliminate, um, up to $10 million in expenses to shift out to street maintenance? Um, and then that question is what services? Uh, I do have to say, you know, having been here for, uh, almost four years now, uh, we are very efficient in what we do, we've looked at a lot of our operations, we're very thin on things, and so getting those, uh, that $10 million is, um, tricky. So that would include, you know, the $4 million from the library, if that was an option, uh, even reducing one of the fire stations, you know, each of our fire stations, when you look at the six fire stations, about a $25 million budget, it's about $4 million, uh, a little bit more per station. Closed parks, privatized streets and sidewalks, um, you know, discontinue that service. Other cities have, because the state, uh, Streets and Highway Code does basically pass on the obligation for sidewalk repair to the adjacent property owner. Uh, I wouldn't wanna go there. Um, but, uh, you know, those are some very drastic issues. We could look, you know, going forward, though it is a minimal, um, ability, but to any new member, um, through negotiations, you know, having them pay an increased percentage of their PERS contribution. And then, you know, of course, across-the-board cuts, uh, which we've kinda been doing just through the vacancies we've been holding. And then we've also, three years ago, we reintroduced, um, earthquake and flood insurance for city buildings. So we spend, or we're gonna propose to spend about $608,000 in the next fiscal year for that premium. However, what that does is it provides us with tens of millions of dollars of coverage for our city buildings, for our water projects, for other things, uh, in case of earthquake or other natural damage. And again, this was something that we started, uh, three years ago, again, because it looked to be around 2010, 2009, the city cut it out for, so for that portion, we had no earthquake insurance. I would not recommend that, but that is something, uh, that we can look at. David?
Okay, so I have two more comments, then we, we're done, with me, at least. One is that, um, I know there's people, residents, 'cause I speak to them every week, um, some of them are not gonna trust what I just said up here, um, but I am, just wanna put it out there, I am more than happy to talk to you on the phone. I've gone to meetings, uh, meet you guys in public, meet you guys out in the streets, um, to talk to you and show you, um, explain as best I can the situation. Um, a lot of people have called me in anger, and I get them too frustrated. That's my goal, 'cause I can't, I can't make everything happy. Um, and then finally, before we turn it back over to the council, um, our vice chair of INRAC, um, would like to make a statement, he's on Zoom, if that's the pleasure-
Back to be accommodated, certainly.
Oh, Ryan Alcantara, our vice chair of INRAC, um, should be on Zoom and would like to make a statement to council.
And we can take that Zoom comment now.
There he is.
Thank you, David, for a very comprehensive presentation, and thank you, Mayor Whitaker, and members of the city council for dedicating time to discuss this very pressing issue, you know, in our city, our streets. I'm Ryan Alcantara, vice chair of the Infrastructure Natural Resources Advisory Committee. I have served on INRAC and the Former Citizens Infrastructure Review Committee for over 10 years. And as mentioned, uh, just short of two years ago, city council asked INRAC to look thoughtfully at our infrastructure needs in the city, not just the streets, but all infrastructure, and provide some recommendations. Um, and we, we did that, and it was a tremendous task for this committee of citizen volunteers, and I'm grateful to the committee, uh, for their service, meeting twice per month, sometimes more, um, at 7:30 in the morning. Um, we, we dedicated significant time in reviewing and deliberating with substantial support from the city, thank you, uh, David, for, for all the support in that, Meg, um, as well, um, as well as Antonia, who, um, participated. But after a fair amount of debate, we offered our recommendations, and, and so I know this was highlighted, but I wanna state it again. $25 million annually is needed to meet our infrastructure needs in the city, uh, which includes $10 million dedicated specifically to streets. $10 million is what additional funding, uh, our streets need to avoid that PCI cliff that David described. And after reviewing alternatives, our recommendation, as, as was stated, included a 1% dedicated sales tax to fund infrastructure for the city. This support, uh, this approach had unanimous support from our committee. Uh, a dedicated funding stream was very important, um, as we came to that recommendation. Creative funding solutions, grants, increased development, et cetera, are available and need to be explored, but the depth of the problem is substantial and requires steady revenue over a sustained period of time. And so, you know, we gotta, we need to remember that we're digging ourselves out of a 30-year hole, so an allocation from general fund, as was being described, or other dedicated, uh, source needs to be a critical part of the, of the solution. And, and I'll, I, I do wanna speak to the Measure S and the indication that there was split support from, from the committee, and, and I'm, I'm not quite sure I would take it that far. I'll, I'll share from my perspective, I appreciated the opportunity that some funding would be made available, but, um, not having an infrastructure dedicated sales tax made it difficult to convince people. As I talked to my fellow citizens, uh, and residents in, in Fullerton, um, folks do not fully trust, um, that money will be spent the way it says unless we put the necessary safeguards. And that's no disrespect to the current city council, um, but the, you know, the, the structure of the infrastructure fund as established enables councils, you know, years from now to, to make a determination that that can be adjusted, and it's difficult. Uh, and I share from my personal perspective, uh, as a, um, 20-plus-year resident of, of Fullerton, um, I, you know, we, we need, we need to see a stronger commitment if we're gonna pursue that additional, uh, funding sources. So the members of INRAC continue to be at your service as we explore options to address the city's infrastructure needs. We welcome input, input, um, from residents to participate in our, uh, meetings that are held twice a week, we're meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30. Uh, we represent diverse perspectives of Fullerton residents, and like all residents, we look forward to continued attention on our roads, and action and commitment on the part of city council to address this long-term problem. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Alcantara. We will get into a discussion involving certain, uh, elements of what you have discussed here, but, uh, prior to that, what I'd like to do at this point is invite members of the public, uh, first and foremost, those who are here- first and foremost, those who are here in attendance with us this evening, anyone who wishes to make public comment to the council. You have up to three minutes to provide that commentary. Please direct all those comments to the council. And as usual, we expect a good decorum here. We're looking for constructive ideas, fair criticisms, any points that you care to make involving this topic.
Can I put this in front of council members?
And before we proceed there, I do want to say thank you to Mr. Grantham on your presentation. And even though at times people may seem uncomfortable about dealing with some of these realities, this really needs to be looked at, at an, as an opportunity, an opportunity for us to address something that I know all of us as council members receive regularly, our complaints and difficulties involving our streets. Can you identify what location we're looking at there?
I can explain.
Oh, pardon. Okay. Yes, please. A little closer to the microphone, if you can, sure. I, I believe so.
I have a severe backache, sitting there for a long time.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. My name is Young Lee. I have lived at my current address since 1988 for more than 30 years. Located at north of Rosecranks and west of Parks Road, northwest corner from Parks Junior High School. Fullerton is a beautiful city and wonderful city. It has a good school, and my daughter graduated Parks Junior High School in Sunny Hills. All my nieces and nephews graduated the Parks Junior and Sunny Hills High School. But our residential streets are horribly neglected for so long. In our neighborhood particularly, we have sadly watched our streets fall into a state of disrepair and deteriorate to the point of being extremely unsightly, unsafe, uncomfortable to drive, and wearing on our cars and tires. Not once decent maintenance has been done since I have lived in our neighborhood. When our neighbors reported potholes and cracks, the city maintenance came and did patchwork. I collected 77 signatures of our neighborhood for petition to repave the street of Avenida San Lorenzo, Via Caliente, Yomo Place, Serano Place, and Calaveria Place in the zip code of 92833 in September 2016, and submitted them to Mayor Fitzgerald and council members. Also, one of the residents who own a business of a PermaCast Asphalt Paving Incorporated sent a letter to Mayor Fitzgerald and council members. The mayor, Mr. Seaborn, one of council members, responded. The mayor, Ms. Fitzgerald, came to our neighborhood and had a meeting with us at my house on October 29, 2016. At the meeting, she promised that the city may sell the surplus property that the city owns in June 2017 after the election and can cover the cost, the cost to repave the street for our neighborhood. Also, Mr. Seaborn, one of the council members, sent an email to me, his plan. I give you the copies of the email from Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Seaborn and the letter of recommendation of the PermaCast Asphalt Paving Incorporated and read it. Since then, we have-
Miss, I'm, I'm sorry, we, thank you for your comments. You've hit your time limit, but we'd be happy to receive those copies that you've provided.
Yes, we have not heard any word from the city. Most of the, so I'll give you the letter at that time.
Provide that to the city clerk and we'll need to move to the next speaker.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments.
Okay, just one more comment. Listening, I really appreciate the presentation of David, but listening to him, I was very depressed. It seems like Fullerton has no hope. You talk about the tax, you know, revenue, but I don't know how other cities handle that. They have the same problem. And it seems like the longer you wait, the labor costs go up and seems like there is no chance for improvement in Fullerton City.
Those are very good points. And, and in all fairness, I do need to limit the time that you can speak, so, thank you.
Okay, well, most of the new council members was elected in 2020 with a campaign promise to fix the older deteriorated Fullerton Street. And I appreciate, Councilman, Mr. Jung, I appreciate your campaign promise.
And, and that's why we're having this meeting, we are pursuing-
I urgently request the City Council members, please to come out.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm really going to have to ask you to terminate your comments.
Okay.
And, and thank you. We, we will examine this. I'd be happy to get back to you on, on those letters. Once, once again, I want to state that you have up to three minutes. And in this case, I was creating an allowance there, but please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker, fellow council members. Great presentation by David, Meg. It's great. I'm glad the city's looking into everything. My name's Michael Plotnik. I'm her neighbor, so you saw a street that gives you an idea of what a PCI of 21 looks like, for an idea. So it all sounds great. I hope we do see some progress. The one thing that's missing is we don't know when our street's going to get looked at. We'd like a plan developed so that you would say, we're going to look at these streets every year, and then you'll know, we'll know when you're going to look at our streets. Maybe we're not the worst street, maybe there's a worse street. And we'll know you're looking. And we appreciate all of Councilmember Jung's efforts. We did meet with previous mayor and she promised a lot of stuff and didn't deliver, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Arnold Dino. I've probably one of the long, one of the longer-serving members of INRAC and, and Citizens Infrastructure Review previously. One of the things I wanted to bring up in response to Vice Chair Alcantara's comments is ditto. I think a lot of us who were serving two years ago felt that, yes, this, we, we did feel that the special tax was necessary. And knowing that that wasn't going to happen, or at least according to the poll, that I personally felt, and one of the reasons why I supported Measure S was something was better than nothing. And if we could get even just a small portion, one of the discussions that we had within INRAC was, how, how is the city budget really, really structured? Will there be enough of, I mean, can we count on a continued allocation dedicated towards streets? And I think the last two years have kind of showed that the city wants, wants that, wants, in addition to the infrastructure fund ordinance, that if we, if there can be a discussion now on how we allocate our general fund money across the board, even if it's not $10 million, even if it's five, something's better than nothing. And I think that's something that I think, as INRAC members, we all agree to. And David, thank you for your presentation. We'll see you at 7:30 in the morning, because we've got a meeting tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
For allowing me to speak. One thing, I have a question. What do you consider a curb ramp? I think I know, but there's all different kinds of terms for it. I call it a curb cut, so I think I know what that is. But anyway, the second thing is, I am totally disgusted that when work is done, I see the cracks and everything, and I call them fissures because they're so big, just a few months after it happens. I'm suggesting the fact that the city, the, not the city, but the residents of the city, especially those that walk and hike and things like that, keep an eye on the new roads. And as soon as they see a crack, say something. The old saying, see something, say something. Because David said that we have up until, there's a year's guarantee. And if there are so many cracks in new covering, new surfacings, that maybe they'll do something and make something so it will be better, so they won't have to continue coming back. That's the thing, most of the time, I think, oh, we do it once and they won't bother us anymore. But if we keep, if they, if the citizens that walk and take buses and things, we see these things, we report them immediately, and then they can be taken care of. And as I say, maybe the companies will do something to make things better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. The reason I am here, I would like to-
A little closer to the microphone would help. The volume's low.
Good evening. The reason I am here, I would like to express my feeling to the committee and let them know I am very frustrated. And I've been in this office many times since 30 years. So, so far, I have sent probably more than five, six letter on behalf of all of my communities and neighbors, and only, I received only two answer, and none of them was satisfactory. If you allow me, I have three minutes, something here to say that. My name is Robert Musavi. I am citizen and retired architect, resided with my family at 2233 Serano Place in Fullerton for 33 years. I am devoted to my city and neighborhood. This letter is in reference to the condition of our surrounding streets, asphalt, specifically on Serano Place and Avenidas and Lorenzo in Fullerton. I called the city in 1994 and inquired about repairs. I received a response indicating that the city was scheduled to be treated with a slurry coating in 1999. And my request was dismissed. My next inquiry in 2005, by going to the door-to-door, to each resident, obtaining signature, sending to the mayor's office, also provides, provided fruitless. Six years later, I am, I'm sorry, six years later, I made another request to make, to the mayor, I, to the mayor, and I received a generic, generic response. Eight years later, in 2020, I sent residents' request again with a signature to the city of Fullerton, no response yet. How many more years do we have to tolerate this condition? One of my fellow residents, students, visited me from Afghanistan, drove in my streets, and Euclid expressed, in this, is this United States streets? The city should be ashamed of themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, mayors.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Graham. Here's my issue. When I was listening to Mr. Graham talking, I feel like I was sitting in the, getting my master's degree or my JD at law school, because he's talking about history. I don't need that. All I ask is that, fix our road, which is about 1,500 feet, less than one-third of miles. And I ask you, fix the road, just like ask you, good morning? Then you don't, I don't want to listen to, yeah, when I got up this morning, I drank coffee and I ate breakfast. No, I don't want that. I want the road fixed and budgets enough there. And Mr. Graham is talking about, there's conditions of the road is bad, then very bad, then fair, and they're good, basically. That's objective view. Well, he's talking about his own subjective view about road condition. And we emulate about the road street. When we emulate, we could fall. And what he's talking about claims, yes. His, his house is about 62 feet wide. How does he feel cannot fix 1,500 feet wide, long street? If I go in front of his house, start picketing, I don't think he will like that. It's only 63 feet. Okay? And believe me, I'll go to your house and picket.
Mr. Mayor, can they address the council and not attack the employees?
Yes, I would-
Can you attack us?
I would ask you to direct comments to the council and we will deal with staff.
Sorry about, sorry.
So, thank you.
Sorry about, sorry to be nettlesome, okay? What I'm trying to say is that we emulate, we walk around, and there's, there's a box, bricks of roadway is empty. There's, you can fall down. And think about it, we have a lot of elders there walking and fell down, and how do we express ourself? Here, we express ourself, but the best thing to do is, I think, just express ourself in front of his residents. I mean, I know I'm kind of vocal and kind of, my strategy is different. But again, I want to fix, just fix the road for us.
Yeah, and, and we ultimately decide what gets fixed.
We want that as well, and, and we appreciate your passion on this, and that's why we're here this, this evening. Please feel free to contact me at any time in the mayor's office. Just call City Council Aid, and we could talk further about that.
Thank you very much.
I'd be happy to.
Or as a resident in my district, feel free to contact me as well, sir.
Great, that's excellent.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Whitaker and council members. Tonight, I'm here speaking on behalf of the conditions of the roads. We are considered the worst roads of Orange County. And that came from when they fixed one of our streets out in Fullerton, they told me that we are actually number one on that. But just an advice about how to spend the money. You guys have $350 million, once again, reminding you. So instead of paying and wasting more money on other stuff, advisors, just look at the public as advisors, free, free advisors. Don't spend $300,000, almost $300,000 on someone to tell you that which pothole has to be covered. And, and the way you guys maybe, you know, fill it up and everything, and once again, it starts coming out, the little rocks, and they damage rims, they damage vehicles. So I don't know if we, we are going to wait on a lawsuit from, from the public when, once the vehicles get damaged, or we have to do something about putting money on the side and fix the roads. Orange Thorpe, I know there, you guys are finally fixing it, but I have to find- but I have to find my other, other ways to go around every single day when I go to work, just because I don't want to damage my, my rims. And they are damaged. So my point is, let's start focusing on the roads' conditions. Let's start putting money on the side. Because I know you guys have money. Don't, don't come to us and say, we don't have money. You guys do have money to spend on other things. So fix our roads, get federal funding, apply for grants. What else can we tell you as, as a public advisors? Tired of the road conditions. Tired of coming from other cities, and, and all you hear, you just need to purchase a four-by-four truck to live in this. They're worse than Mexico. And I'm talking about rural places of Mexico. Zacatecas, Mexico, El Cargadero, Mexico Road, you know, places where it's not a city, it's a rural place in the middle of nowhere. And our, our streets are worse than those streets. So, once again, we are here, because we're desperate. Try to allocate the monies, try to allocate, I know you, there's ways to do it. Come on, there's ways to do it. Don't wait for a lawsuit anymore. Thank you.
Miss, just, just one point of clarification. You mentioned, we have $350 million. You're, you're referring to federal funding. It's, it's more like $34 million that we have over the next two years. And I just want to make sure that that's what you were referring to. Is that correct?
The federal funding, yes.
All right, well, thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
All right, you too. Thanks. Anybody else in council chambers right now who's interested in addressing the council? Please come forward. And Madam Clerk, you're lining up Zoom callers as we speak, right?
We are ready for Zoom callers to start raising their hands, and we'll call them to speak after this last in-person speaker.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I've lived in Fullerton for almost two years now. I have to apologize to chambers for losing my, for my outburst last week. I apologize. I have a less than zero tolerance for liars, but that shouldn't preclude me from maintaining my temper. Councilmember Jung, Mayor Potem Dunlap, and Mayor Whitaker, all three of you ran and campaigned on having the answer to fixing our roads, not needing another pointless study, so that you can complain about the conditions and tell us what we already know. You said you had the solution that is very different. The reason I am asking is, this is the third time I am explicitly asking, because I have fallen a number of times due to the conditions of the roads. I have broken two pairs of glasses, I have gushed a lot of blood, and I have actually lost consciousness once. So I ask you again, what is the solution that you claim to have? Mayor Whitaker, you control the agenda and actually have a, a majority on the council now. So please, agenda something that will actually do something, rather than another pointless study that will just give us answers that we already have. Especially considering that you three campaigned on having the answer, not needing a study, but having the answer, what is the solution? I will take my hands off on the video replay. Happy Ramadan and go Bruins.
Thank you for your comments. And with that, I don't see any others in the chamber. Madam Clerk, what do we have on the phone?
We are ready for our first Zoom caller.
Okay, a reminder to those on the Zoom call to please utilize the raise hand feature. I will be calling Eric Gutierrez first.
Hi, I'm sorry, can I be heard?
Yes.
Hi, I'm, my name's Eric Gutierrez. I live on Page Avenue in Fullerton. I just, I had a few questions, which I don't know if you could answer right now, you know, or if the city manager could answer. So, I'm sure he's familiar with Page Avenue. We used to be part of the county, now we are part of the city of Fullerton. So our traffic is not quite, I think, what you would consider residential street, would be more akin to Valencia. So I'm curious, you know, in terms of how the classification is for that road and repairing it, where we would fall in line? You know, and, and we, we tend to get, because we're down between the elementary school, Orange Thorpe, and kind of like a heavier, what used to be Baker Street area, there's a lot of kids that walk up and down the street. So I just kind of had a question on that, and where we fall in line. And then my other question was, in terms of the funding, and I mean, I know that there seems to be a lot of anger from different residents, and I get it, you know, but I think we do have to remember, like, you know, with the city council members, we sympath, at least I sympathize. I know it's not easy to solve all these problems. But in terms of, you know, new development that comes into the city, I know that, like, you know, they built those apartments or those condos on Commonwealth, or the ones that they just built on Harbor not too long ago. Or the aspect, to what extent are those developers paying or reimbursing the city anything for the additional infrastructure? I'm sorry, the additional cost of the infrastructure? Because these are large developments that have, you know, I don't know, 500 people living in them, which means that there's going to be a lot more cars in the road. But it seems like, I don't know if the city's just approving these without asking that they actually contribute any additional money. You know, so I think that would be kind of an interesting funding source, to see like, you know, when we do these, or when the city council approves these new projects, to what extent are they going to be reimbursing the city or at least increasing our budget, so we can make some of these repairs? That's, that's it for me.
Thank you. Thank you for those questions. I, I do want to just take a small aside here and speak with Mr. Grantham again. Could you, there have been a couple speakers here recently that don't seem to have a full understanding or explanation on the PCI, and what our, our requirements are to meet current, current conditions on reporting, auditing and reporting PCI. Could you summarize that briefly? Pavement Condition Index PCI.
Okay, so the Pavement Condition Index is, is the rating that is given to a street by our consultant from 0 to 100. It is a requirement from OCTA for us to remain eligible for Measure M2 funding, the local fair share funding that goes towards street repairs. That we inspect our streets, our materials every two years, and our residential's every six years. And we end up getting the rating on the streets. So it breaks down our streets. So each street segment is giving a rating, so we know in GIS, your particular street, what the rating is. And then the system as a whole is given an average rating based on certain factors into the program.
Now, it was stated that some of this is maybe more subjective. How would you address that question?
You know, there's training that OCTA requires, to try and maintain consistency through all the cities in the county. It is a visual inspection. They are trained to take a 100-foot section of what is considered uniform conditions of the street, and use that to determine what the PCI score is of that street, in that particular segment. So, yes, there is, you know, it's human. It's being done by a human. There's going to be some factor of error, for lack of a better term, as you do it. But it should be pretty minimal in the big scheme of things.
Thank you for that. I'm just hoping that that'll help some of these questioners on this. Madam Clerk, who do we have?
Okay, I'm going to call upon Julie.
Hi, this is Julie. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Julie. Could you speak a little louder or closer to the, to the phone?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there seems to be some feedback. Julie, if you could please lower the volume, if you have another device that you are watching the meeting on, lower that volume. And when you're ready. Julie, are you there?
Yes, I am, but I, I don't want to hear you.
It is faint, but continue.
You can't hear me?
Mr. Mayor, would you like Julie to continue?
Well, that was slightly better. Let her try again right now.
Apologies, Julie. It seems we cannot hear you. We will call you back at the end of the rotation, while you adjust your audio issues. DL, you have permission to speak?
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, a little louder if you could, please.
How's that? Is that a little bit better?
Yes.
Happy that. Hey, thank you, guys. This is Muneez Farah, the logician calling in. As a member of INRAC, I also want to compliment David and echo some of my cohorts on the committee. David's just done an awesome job versus, as Meg and everybody else. Having said that, I really believe that we need to focus on all streets, not just the streets that are already rated good or better. I think that does create an equity issue, for sure. It also does result in, you know, excess liability claims and quality of life issues for people in areas that may not be as well-funded. When we're talking about a special versus a general tax, I think we need to really have specific parameters on how spending will be made. If we look at a special tax, we're looking at 66 plus 1%. For a general tax, which is 50 plus 1%, which seems easier to pass in some respects, and it absolutely is. However, when you're dealing with the entire city, that can sometimes be a little bit of an issue. The other thing that came up was, with Measure S, it really failed due to confusion on parts of the voters. And I think it wasn't the best explained, when you've got people really putting down Measure S, a minor portion of people supporting it, and nobody really understood it. What I would suggest is that maybe we do a, a study, so that council considers a special tax in 2022. I think it's only $8,500 to put it on the ballot, which is way cheaper than a polling consultant, which I also agree, I've gotten it wrong several times over the last couple of years. And if we need to, maybe we make it a hybrid special tax. Would we do it by district? Or we do it by special areas? Where then the voters in those areas can decide if we feel it's going to be an issue to get a citywide special tax passed. I would also like to say that this is going to be an ongoing issue. I don't think expending the bulk of the one-time $35 million payment over the next two years is the best way to accomplish this. I think we need a long-term solution. Unfortunately, it is likely going to come down to additional taxation, which most of us are completely opposed to. But I really feel that if we look at a special tax, and we explain the parameters and put rules in place for it, there'll be a lot more success, or potential for success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jose Trinidad Castaneda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. I just want to commend staff for a really comprehensive presentation, as other commenters have. I've been attending Infrastructure and Natural Resources Advisory Committee meetings for the last couple of years, and just doing my best to learn as an engaged resident. I, you know, I definitely want to contribute thoughtful input and some ideas that maybe haven't been considered before. In my past work, I worked on Measure W, LA County Measure W, the Safe Clean Water Measure, which used LiDAR to calculate the amount of impermeable, impermeable surfaces on a parcel. And it was a parcel tax that helped contribute to green infrastructure and storm water capture. So I'm wondering if there's interest in studying something like that, whether it's a special tax or a very narrow parcel tax that wouldn't amount to much more than, you know, $30, $40, $50 a year, and new taxes that could contribute to a larger $50, $75, $100 million budget for our Public Works Department to fix the roads. And in terms of the timeline for that, it was a two-year timeline to get all the stakeholders engaged, and a vast majority of LA County residents to vote in favor for this, because it was so needed. And it resulted in $300 million a year for the LA County Public Works Department to do this work, much, much needed work, and build new parks that they're working on now. But it took so much time in advance to really get this going, that I feel there's lessons to be learned and to share with our city, because we have, we now know what voters can handle in a short amount of time. And we just need more time for education, and perhaps a city grant to, a nonprofit grant administrator that can subcontract with local nonprofits to do this outreach across the city and each district, with enough time in advance to get proper engagement and full understanding from residents and voters to have that 67% majority threshold for a parcel tax or a special infrastructure tax. So just wanted to, wanted to contribute that. And then just note that, for those who, you know, I hope that new developments in the future can contribute to whatever side of the street-
Thank you for your comments.
-that they're offered. It's, it's very limited. We need a much larger funding-
Thank you, Mr. Castaneda. Next speaker, please.
With that, Mr. Mayor, there are no more speakers. It seems the attendee who was having trouble speaking left the, the meeting.
You said that you might call Julie back. Have you attempted that?
She is no longer in the Zoom meeting. I do not see her name here on the attendee list.
All right. Wanted to give every opportunity for people to make their comments. And it appears as though we're at the end of public comment. We'll bring the item back to the council for discussion. Is, I see, Councilmember Jung, ready?
I'm going to ask our, my fellow councilman to the right of me to forgive me for blaming folks. Because as far as I can see, as a resident of 35 years in the city, somebody was responsible, or someones. This didn't magically happen overnight, and I'm not going to allow folks to take a victory lap for poor decision-making. We had a gentleman in here, not so long ago, crying out for two years, he's asked for sidewalks to be fixed. He's been marginally or devastatingly hurt as a result. Two elected officials sitting here, has only been here for less than five months. Wonder if he'd be that proactive and that vocal to the other council members that have been here since he has. That said, infrastructure is supposed to be background noise in a city. It's certainly not in Fullerton. If you ride any of the roads, you, I'm sure it sounds like music to you. Every citizen in our city, operating within the framework of the law, should expect to live in comfort and safety. That should be a marginal expectation. For a city to function well, it requires- That should be a marginal expectation. For a city to function well, it requires that we be modern, efficient, reliable, and that our infrastructure reflects our values. And they just haven't. You know, folks speak about the unfunded pension obligations and other debts, but those are facing all other aspects of government as well. Every other municipality deals with that as well. How come we can't get past that? I am gentle, want to use kid gloves, I guess, to recognize that we need to adapt to the new economy, demographic, and environmental challenges that we face. But we should have, at every opportunity as elected officials, give our citizens an opportunity to thrive and prosper. The fact that they can't drive down their own streets, to me, is the reason why we're having this study session. And while I may not have all the answers and certainly didn't run with that in mind, I hope to have some after this, at least to get us a fraction of the way there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim Donlap?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to first make a few comments. You know, I oppose the general sales tax increase that would have reserved exactly $0 for road repairs and infrastructure repairs because despite political advertising that suggested the opposite, it did absolutely nothing to bound any of that money to fix our streets. And, you know, I think it's important to note that an overwhelming majority of Fullerton residents did the same. And so, you know, as we look at it, in just under, you know, four or five months on council, you know, we've been able to find about $750,000 in discretionary expenses that we've been able to, you know, to shoot down. And again, as I said earlier, that money should be immediately reinvested into our streets and into somebody's neighborhood because that will make a big difference. You know, we saw the costs that were outlined earlier. You know, that'll certainly do a mile of road repairs, in which, in the grand scheme of what's needed in the city, you know, that's obviously, it's a drop in the bucket, but it's very much, I think, a step in the right direction. And it's the type of priority that we need to set. Additionally, you know, one of the things that we saw, and I want to commend David, he gave a great presentation, so this is certainly not a takeaway from him, but I think it was important to note that, you know, we tracked revenue, and we looked at each and every impact to revenue over the years, but we did absolutely nothing to track some of that discretionary spending or the adjustments, you know, or cuts that could have been made over time in order to reallocate some of that funding into our roads and streets. Because I think at the end of the day, one of the things that I find most offensive is when you look at what gets, you know, the expenses that are paid from the general fund, to look back over the past two years and realize, and actually, I think it actually might be more like three to five, you know, that there's actually been no funding to roads or street repairs from the general fund. And that, to me, is just completely offensive because we look at everything that gets paid from there, and that's a slap in the face to Fullerton residents. So I think what we really have to do is continue on that path of reform where we're making those cuts and adjustments, but we're also aggressively pursuing and seeking the federal funding that's available, some of the county funding that's available, and continuing to work with and lobby, you know, our state and federal officials so that they can, you know, they can help us here. So I think, you know, if we continue to lie and tell half-truths to the public, we're not going to solve the problems. And I think, you know, we obviously know what needs to be done. And I think that's kind of a two-pronged approach to some of the reforms that are necessary. It's both the, you know, the expense side of things, because if you just continue to bring in revenue, you're gonna only squander what's brought in.
Thank you. Councilmember Silva?
Thank you. Yeah, no, David, thank you for that great presentation. And I want to apologize for the heckling you got. And I just want to say that if the public comes to scream and yell at someone, it should be us up here and not our staff. They're doing a fine job the best they can. So if there is an issue or concern, please, you know, point to us, at least to me. But thank you for that. But on the infrastructure subject, I do want to start looking at some things that some of the speakers said and that we were presented with. I do want to see if we can go back and do a special assessment study, maybe have a couple of neighborhoods who are willing to do it, you know, do a special assessment on their block, and do a pilot program to see if some communities are willing to do that. Because like we've said, we're not going to be able to get to every street tomorrow or next year in 10 years. So maybe there might be some neighborhoods out there who are willing to do a special assessment tax and see how that goes. If there isn't, there isn't. But I think we should at least go out there and put it out and say, hey, here's one plan that you could help refurbish your streets while we, the city, the city council, can allocate and find that consistent $10 million a year yearly that we need to start fixing the streets. So that's one thing I would like to see if we could do something like that. Another thing that I think was brought up, utility cuts. I know that when cable first was installed a few years ago, they were doing, I think, a six or 12-inch cut on the edge of the streets on both sides. And that added, I believe, and to the street conditions gradually over time. You know, you have two cuts on the street, you've got the rain, you've got the trucks. So I want to see how much damage is attributed maybe to those cuts that happened in the 80s, was it, or 90s? I'm not sure when that happened. But that, you know, and we can learn from that to see what other cuts we're allowing now, and maybe do a utility cut fee. If a utility wants to come into Fullerton and cut our streets, we have to look at it and say, hey, what's that damage now? And you're gonna fix it. But down the road, 10 years from now, is that gonna cause additional damage to the street, and then we have to be liable. So I want to see if we can come back with some sort of a study to see what other cities are doing on utility cut fee. Another thing that I, that was touched upon was the, and I know this came up when we were talking about the Goodman Project out here on Orange St. College, especially during the pandemic, we had a lot of delivery trucks in and around Fullerton. And now with that Goodman warehouse going up, we're gonna have a lot more. So I like to see what, can we do a delivery, a large delivery truck fee? Because, as you know, when these large trucks come into our cities and if they're already banged up, do they cause more damage? I don't know. But I like to look to see what other cities are doing with that. Is it possible? If not, well, we move on. And then the last thing, I understand that L.A. City is doing what they call a water blowout study or fee, where if there's a major water blowout where you have to cut out a major part of the street, I think they're doing a curb-to-curb, block-to-block repair because that blowout caused significant damage. And so, in essence, because of our water main from, we had to fix that, we repair, you know, a 30 by 36 portion. But can we extend that to that block, curb-to-curb? Because, you know, I want to see if that's possible. So if we can look at that to see if we can do something like that. So maybe we can tap into some of these special funds who, again, help us mitigate this while we, as the city staff, as the city council, look for those $10 million a year. So those are some of the recommendations and solutions I would like to see us look at and maybe bring back to council so we can, again, decide, how do we go from here? And thank you.
Well, thank you. And this is still an open discussion. So often on items, council meeting, we have a final say and then we press to a vote. There is no action being taken this evening. What we're attempting to do is provide some direction and maybe have a meeting of the minds in terms of how to address this problem. With that, Councilmember Zahra, do you want to go next or last?
I'll go next, Mr. Mayor. It's fine. I'll give you the last word.
Well, and these aren't necessarily the last word. If we have discussion following these statements, we can embark on that.
Sure thing. So again, I want to thank staff for this. This is not the first time we've had this presentation. Some people have followed this subject. We did one last year. We did one, I believe, also on our revenue and our finances in general, not just on our infrastructure. So we've been here before, and we've, you know, the last time around, the decision was that the best of all abilities in making a decision that we would do a general sales tax. That was the, you know, from the last council. I do want to clarify, not to go back and harp on that issue too much, but I do want to just clarify one thing is that we did, part of it was also looking at, because of the way general taxes are, once you specify something or some use, then it becomes a dedicated tax. And so the way around that was to create an infrastructure fund, in which we have now, and I think that was a long time overdue anyway. But half of that general tax money would have gone into it by city ordinance. So there was some way of, while you couldn't legally guarantee because of the legal aspects of it, there was a mechanism that was created in order to provide at least 50% of those funds coming in from that tax. And that would have been approximately $10 million a year. And that would have been created the sustainability. So that was, just to clarify that point that was made earlier, I also want to just caution is that I know there's a lot of talk about let's cut and cut, or, you know, we're bragging about certain cuts that we've made. Some of these cuts were not funds that could have been used for roads to begin with. So, for example, the master plan for parks in RAC that was rejected at the last council meeting, that money would not have been able to use, even though it was a savings, let's say. We can debate that, and we did. But that money would not have been able to be used for roads at all because it is dedicated for parks and park dwelling fees. A lot of grants, we can go after grants and this and that. Again, there are a lot of restrictions, as we've heard from the very wonderful presentation, that a lot of this, some of it, we just can't use for roads. I know there's talk about the federal rescue funds that we're getting, the American Rescue Act, the 35 million approximately, I think it's 34,700. Again, there are still details that we need to figure out as far as what restrictions there are. But from what we know is that road maintenance is not one of those things that we can use it for. So again, we might have to be able to be creative here and there about this. But in general, we can't use that money. I know the federal government is working on an infrastructure bill, but we don't know if that will pass, and we don't know if that money will come directly to cities even. It may go to the county, it may go to the state, and then we would have to go in and try to get our share of that. None of this gives us control over our own destiny. And while we can sit and pontificate and make big, you know, promises and speeches, and I'm not here, I like some of the ideas that Councilmember Silva has put forward because they are practical ideas. That is what I'm looking for, is practical solutions and not just generalized sort of, you know, sensationalist remarks. I think our community is tired of blaming, of pointing the finger. I'm tired of talking about the past and who's to blame for this. Our city is struggling financially in all its aspects, so we also need to address that issue as well. What I'd like is some specifics. Now, from the discussion, I would love to see what our council members and my colleagues would put forward tonight. I certainly support the ideas that Councilmember Silva has put forward. I think those are good avenues to explore. I do caution about the assessment districts because they tend to, they may favor certain neighborhoods that are wealthier than others because some people just can't pay, so they may reject an assessment district, and therefore those streets in those poorer neighborhoods may not get got fixed. And so, you know, but I'd like to explore all of those. I also want to add one more specific thing, which is we do have a lot of alleyways that cost quite a bit of money in maintaining it. They are not being maintained. And I know in some complexes, the complex I used to live in, the alleyways were city property, they were never maintained, and the apartment, the condo complex association surrounded that entire street, and no one else, you know, came through those alleyways. And so this, and I'd like to see us have a discussion with some of these homeowner associations about privatizing some of the alleyways. I know in discussions with my previous homeowner associations, they were open to that idea. So I'd like us to explore that because that could take a lot of mileage off our road maintenance in the future. When we make decisions, we cannot, the one thing that we can't repeat from past decisions and past councils is that we cannot be shortsighted about this. If we make decisions, they have to be sustainable for the next 50 years. I don't want future councils to come back and start saying, hey, that council didn't do anything. So that is what I'd like to see. And also, one comment that one of the residents has said, which I thought was extremely valid, and this is a point of frustration always, is that I would like to see us put forward a plan. I know we do have a five-year sort of, I think, plan or projection of what roads are going to be repaired or what lists are. But I'd like that to be a little bit more publicized and easier to access so that we can, so people know when their turn is gonna come, more or less. I think it's a little harder to predict these things because there are a lot of factors. But I think that's something that I'd like to see us put forward a little bit more. Again, the infrastructure, we're talking a lot about, when we talk about roads, we're talking a lot about road repairs. But we do have also another aspect of our infrastructure that we're not addressing. And if I look at the InRAC projections, they said we need $10 million for our roads alone, but for infrastructure, we need $25 million. We have a light grid, our light grids are very old, and we have a light grid in my neighborhood, in the Richmond neighborhood, that is just not compatible with the upgrades of Southern California Edison. Those transformers keep blowing out. That grid alone will probably cost to replace and fix it $35 million alone. So we have, there are other things that we need to address as well. And I'd like to look at those and bring our staff to look at when creating assessment districts or anything like that. Also bring us those ideas as well so we can address those. And I am open to any council member right now agendizing something tonight because it would be lovely to do something. Thank you.
I do have a request from the Mayor Pro Tim first.
I just like to clarify, because if the goal here is that we're here tonight to make decisions and to determine what we can do today, you know, to change tomorrow, I think the reality is that we need to get off of the treadmill that, you know, the council and city governance has been on for the past 30 years. And so if we don't look back at that and we don't reflect on that and make the needed changes to our operations, you know, reform-wise, we're doomed to fail. Because the reality is Facebook posts and photo ops don't fix roads. You know, we need to get together here where we can actually collaborate and solve problems.
Councilmember Jung?
All right. Let's talk about the blame game for a moment. If you're gonna sit there and say that we're pontificating but without solutions, how was your solution in 2019 to give a raise to municipal employees helping infrastructure, councilman? So we're here to study, to work through what we have here, and to find common solutions that make sense for our citizens. If you want to talk about bloviating, sir, perhaps you should have done it when you gave the raise. Could have fixed a road or two.
Mr. Mayor, I must object to this because I did not give raises to anyone. This is the council decisions, and I'm not sure exactly what.
You didn't make that vote?
I'm not sure what vote you're talking about, Mr. Jung.
Now we forget all of a sudden. Okay.
Could you specify what that is?
Police officers. Gave it two years ago, 2019.
That was a 1.5 retention, a 1.5 retention which was deferred. Yeah, so you would not, okay, 1.5.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I could chime in real quick, I know it's getting late on the subject. What we're looking for is because we can't get specific action tonight, but we can get direction from the city council, you know, ideas, proposals, and then bring that back in an item to actually get official direction from a regular agenda item at a subsequent city council meeting. So.
If I may, Mr. City Manager, this was a request by council to have a study session so that we have the opportunity to discuss among ourselves what possible, what the problems are to be edified by the presentation and to have at least some discussion on that. So I don't know that this was staff-directed in terms of getting an outcome.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, you know, because I'm hearing that there's a concern you can't get action from here. We are. We're here to hear from you and to answer any questions and to hear basically constructive, constructive proposals for going. constructive, yeah, constructive proposals for going forward to help fix our infrastructure. So we're, we're here to answer any other questions, and then if there's something we can bring back in the future, most certainly we will do that at a subsequent meeting because that's when we can actually take the direction. But we can hear from you, put it together, and then bring it back in an agenda item that is specifically to that.
Well, I have a few points I'd like to make as well. I haven't really talked at this point. We did have, you know, some interesting conversation and points that were raised by members of the public. The, much was talked about in terms of sci-fi, of the problems with the utility cuts into our streets and further deterioration of them. And I want to report or make aware here that four days ago, I had a Zoom meeting, a discussion with one of the two co-founders of Sci-Fi Networks, Mike Harris. And he and I had a free-ranging, very open discussion with, it was very frank on both sides. I found his approach to be rather constructive. He was happy to be talking directly with me and, and hopefully through the council as a result. And he has pledged to follow through and make sure that we are going to deal with many of the complaints and problems that have plagued this installation from the beginning. It's, his best projection was that we may be up to two more years to complete this project. And we were talking about ways of possibly accelerating that and then other methods. He, he referred to the trenching discussion as one thing that took an inordinate amount of time and has put the project in arrears a little bit, not in a complaining way, but he believes now that we've achieved an understanding where we can go forward. I, I did pledge our efforts on behalf of the council to ensure that, to the degree possible, that we'll allow that project to continue unimpeded as long as many of these problems have been addressed. And he pledged to do so. So it was, it was a very good discussion that we had. It was brought up earlier about our pavement condition index and being at 63.8% of Orange County's 34 cities. I, I'd be interested in knowing exactly where Fullerton ranks on that and what our neighbors, what their average ratings were, if ours is 63.8. That can be addressed in the future. I don't need an immediate answer on it. I would like to get my arms around a couple other things. When we talk about the amount of expenditures going into our streets, we generally exclude at least dollar totals for those, the nexus that we have with water and sewer projects, with street improvements. And there is value that is expended annually from both of those areas on street improvements, and we often don't quantify those and include those into total expenditures, at least for purposes of reports such as this evening. A little bit was made of SB1, and one of the problems, I don't want us to go back and rehash all, all the history on these things, but one of the big problems with SB1 was, by my calculation back in 2017, when, when this was being debated completely, is people who live in Fullerton, businesses, residents, and even visitors to Fullerton are paying, or were paying at that time, a little over $19 million on average for SB1. That was the cost. What we've been able to obtain annually for our street purposes is something on the order of a little over 2 million, up to 2.4 million, something like that. That's only 13%. So for that tax where we're, we're paying $19 million, we're only getting 13% back for our issues with our streets here in the city of Fullerton. I looked on ca.gov, and it identifies, and it says SB1 investments are focused on the following areas. There's been an 85% increase in the number of bridges being annually dealt with as far as solving construction problems or replacing those bridges, an 85% increase due to SB1. Caltrans is on track to meet the goal of repairing an additional 500 bridges by 2027. Talks about fixing an average, up 700% increase of fixing culverts annually. Since SB1, Caltrans has fixed an average of 2,100 lane miles annually of freeways, a 40% increase. SB1 created a goal of having California's highways in 98% good or fair condition. Caltrans is on track to meet the goal. Now, we all drive throughout the state of California, so we all benefit to some extent on that. But it's clear that the majority of this contribution, this required contribution tax-wise, is not addressing our problems here in Fullerton. So as we look at these efforts to obtain some mileage out of, out of what we're spending on roads, we still demonstrably, I believe, don't really receive our share. The people who spoke this evening, who came and addressed us, we really appreciate your input. There were a few specific problems that probably require being addressed. And what I'd like to do is see us have some follow-through on that in terms of some of those individuals. And I do invite any individual who spoke here this evening that if you don't hear from us in one fashion or another, to please call me. My, my number is 714-981-8474, and I can receive voice or text messages on that, and I will get back to you. I think that, you know, as we talk the blame game, one thing is for certain, the last time that a real stab was taken at this problem, 80% of the council supported the methodology that resulted in a 60-40 loss at the ballot box. And for numerous reasons, we also, this city spent a large amount of money on expert consultants who wound up pancaking, basically, on this project. And I believe that those who do want to resolve some of this problem missed a golden opportunity because they reached too far and too wide and were really looking at that proposal to solve a lot more than streets. But it was dressed in wolf's clothing as strictly a street repair measure on behalf of the city. So I think there is plenty of blame to go around, including the blame of that council, of which three of us are here tonight who were part of that council, of ignoring the recommendations by INRAC and of ignoring just some basic common sense. Even tonight, as we talk about floating assessments, good luck with that. It'll be interesting to see exactly what happens. So any council members wanting to propose that and use that maybe as a centerpiece of, of their next reelection campaign, I wish you luck. But the, the issue about street repair is that over these decades, it has not been a priority. And when I first joined the council, I realized, is talking to Public Works Management, that they thought it was actually unlawful to use general funds for street repair. And it's partly, this is the internal budgeting situation where a, a rule gets established internally, locally, which says, we're not going to expend any monies on any, on further on this area on street repairs and everything. It's going to have to come from new money, external money in many cases. And so what that shows, at least in budgeting, is that all those councils' priorities were not on this, on streets and on street repair. And every year, as we go through a budget, I always say the budget itself speaks to what the priorities are. And so consistently, we've had a majority on this council over the last several years since I've been involved who have not made this a priority. And that is the challenge that we have with this year's budget. We're, we're right in the process right now of arriving at a budget. That budget will speak to our priorities. And just as was mentioned a little bit earlier in the back and forth with council members, monies are expended, new monies are expended on numerous priorities, and those have all taken precedence over this priority. And I keep hearing from the public, from residents, from business owners, what the true priority should be, and I think that a majority of this council needs to get in step with that. And...
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Yeah, so, so you were mentioning about, you know, three of us here from the previous council, and we didn't listen to INRAC. So from what I'm hearing is you would have voted for the two-thirds vote if that would have been the choice, choice of the last council to do a special assessment?
No, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to engage in theoreticals necessarily, but it was clear to me the way that it was constructed, and it did receive support of four of the council members, that Measure S was just, it was doomed from the beginning.
Yeah, no, no, but you also mentioned that we, you know, we didn't listen to INRAC. So I just was, I guess, my fault thinking that you would have listened to INRAC and done the, the specialist, the two-thirds votes.
I think that that would have stood a much better opportunity of passing, even with the two-thirds majority requirement.
So that would have been a 5-0 vote, we would have gone that way?
I, I don't know. I said I'm not going to speak to theoreticals.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? We, we had a councilman, I think was very astute in saying that we should agendize something, so I would like, with a, with the help of another, to agendize an item to look at the city's business tax, or I'm sorry, business fee revenue, where our business license fees are in proportion to other cities that are around us, whether we are way off the mark and we've got a fire sale happening in our city, and we need to raise those. I, I think if we're going to talk about revenue, certainly I'd like to look at that, sir, and see where revenue possibilities are there.
Okay, you've provided that as some direction. Could that be accommodated the next meeting?
Not on the next meeting because all the agenda items are due basically tomorrow, but we can get it on the May 4th meeting. That'll give us time to adequately put together the study, look at what other cities are doing, and put an agenda item together. But we can take direction like that from tonight.
Councilmember Jung, that's good.
Yeah, I think that's a start, gets us something where we can actually look at something for revenue generation. The other, one common thing that was mentioned that I want to dispel and make sure the information is accurate, homeowners associations are historically underserved residents. Homeowner associations pay for their own street sweeping, they maintain their own streets, they maintain their own sidewalks, still pay the full sanitation fee that every other homeowner pays. So I'm not sure that the notion of privatizing alleyways and HOA's work, you know, we've got the densest amount of HOAs in, in my district, District 1, and there are no alleyways there. So I, I certainly would say if we're going to look at possibilities, that, you know, there are some possibilities there perhaps to privatize, you know, a, a street. But again, we have a director here that made it very clear to me tonight that he doesn't think that that's a great idea. So I tend to listen to experts. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. City Manager, one, one question I did have, it occurred to me, you know, because as, as we're talking about some of these reforms and changes in spending, you know, we had asked, I think it was at the December 16th meeting, you know, for you to provide kind of a, you know, sort of a, you know, skeleton outline of, you know, kind of, I guess, budgetary expenses, potential savings and such. And I, I wanted to see, you know, because I think we had tasked, maybe, I, I want to say it was March, April, it was certainly Q1. So I wanted to see if there was any update on that at this point, if there is any progress to report on.
Well, we are putting together the budget. We do have the first go-through done, which means that basically we've talked to all the departments. And as far as... Oh, the fiscal sustainability? Yes. That kind of put on, got put on a hold when our deputy city manager left. Most of the departments have turned in their information, have not gotten back to that right now because of that hole in the organization. I don't think it's to the degree what we had hoped it would have been because it's kind of looking at comparables to other cities, but I'll look over it with our analyst crew and see where it's at. And if it's in a worthy format that we can just kick it back out to everybody and summarize it, I'll go ahead and do that. But, yeah, that's something that we need to get back to. Thanks, I think, I think that'll be helpful.
Sure.
Yeah, just to respond to a couple of things, on the, the business thing, I, I just caution that our businesses are struggling and we do need to improve business and bring business into the city to, to, to fix our roads at the expense of increasing fees on small businesses. And I think that may not be a, the wisest move, but I'm, again, we are here having a, a discussion, and I welcome all, all ideas. And we can certainly take a look at everything. As for the homeowners associations, some of the older neighborhoods that have, that used to be apartments, like the old complex I used to live in, is, is not, does not maintain its roads itself. It's all city-owned roads and alleyways, and there are some in, in the more, the older parts of town. Some of the newer developments, they've, is they, when they built, were built, they were built with homeowners' fees built in to maintain their own roads. So it's a very different situation. But again, as we're looking at different avenues, I think we should explore everything that we can. The, the one, the, you know, Mr. Mayor, you, you mentioned that our, you know, our budget is, reflects, should reflect our values. I think that you are correct in that, and I think I would, I'm looking forward to our rounds of discussions on, on our budget and, and to certainly look at your ideas and what you think we can do with our budget. And, you know, to rely on outside funds, I think that might be something that will not provide us a sustainability that we're looking for. But again, I'm looking forward to a round of discussion on the budget as well. And last, last comment on the 1.5% police retention incentive, I, I gotta, I gotta say this, but those, we defunded 10 vacant positions in order to achieve savings in that. So it wasn't, it wasn't a, a burden on the, on the budget. However, it was deferred, and it will come back, and I'm looking forward to Councilmember Jung's opinions on it and the next discussions on, on the next budget. Thank you.
Councilman Silva, you had something else?
Just going to ask, so we, I gave some, some input direction. Are we going to be able to come back with some of my requests or suggestions?
Well, I think some of the requests that we've made, we would be looking for staff to provide us, you know, answers to, to those questions. So I'm, I'm not sure whether or not this is a one-time event here, this, this study session on this problem, or I, in fact, I'm trying to remember, was it Mayor Pro Tem Dunlap who made the motion for this session and who seconded it was?
I did.
Okay, Councilmember Jung. So I guess my question would be, has this been a satisfactory forum this evening from your perspective, or what do you think we need to follow this up?
You know, I think it was, it was certainly a start, and I think it was a step in the right direction. I mean, I, I will admit, I was a little disappointed that some of this information was, you know, kind of regurgitated from previous reports. And, and in fact, you know, there were reports, I think noted or referenced in the, you know, that INRAC plan that, you know, we didn't have available. So perhaps, I, I think what would be, you know, a little more beneficial to me would be, you know, what in fact, you know, some of these plans could look like. And I also think looking specifically, you know, kind of street by street, you know, in neighborhoods and also the arterials, to better understand some of these road conditions and, you know, perhaps cost estimates as to what it would cost to put some of those, to put some of the, you know, funds that we can find to work. I, I think that, that would be perhaps some next steps in terms of follow-up to actually, you know, put the rubber to the road, so to speak, and get things done.
And thank you. And Councilman Jung, what's your assessment on this?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think that discussion for us on the dais is really important. So anytime that we have a transparent discussion with our community amongst ourselves, with them in tow, I, I think is only beneficial as we move forward. So I, I'm a firm believer in starts as well, and hopefully this will be a start to a path forward.
And I agree with that very much, as most people in the public are aware, we are bound by the Brown Act and requirements of the Brown Act, which don't really allow us a free flow of discussion of some of these common issues of, of interest. So that's why this study session was created to allow a little bit more of a, of a brainstorming or at least a back and forth discussion. One thing that I'd like to add, at least that I missed a little bit earlier, was there's that adage which is, if you can't... that adage, which is, "If you can't measure something, then you can't manage it." And as I mentioned earlier, I need to get my arms around a few more specifics here in the city, that contribution from water and sewer to streets, to make sure that we're consolidating and seeing the entire amount of value that is being applied to the streets. Second thing is, and even though it's quite variable, would be, and one of the speakers mentioned this as well, development projects which are required as mitigation, really, to provide funds for streets or any, any related improvement for the city, thereby displacing the city's direct need to do that as well. I know year-to-year that varies, but I would hope that we do have ready measurements of those amounts of expenditures and that we could provide a report that consolidates all that to allow us to know the entirety of what's been applied to this problem each year, and if that could be provided.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, on that, and I'll have Meg or David step in if I misstate this, but on the developers that come in, there's a couple of things that we do. There's a development impact fee, which is a traffic impact fee. Generally, that is for impacts of the increased vehicles that that project generates. So, it's for intersection improvements, signalize intersections, widening or something like that, not for road maintenance. But what we do is, where there is a project and they have been doing things, you'll notice in some of these newer developments, that we do make them go, you know, replace the road in front and around the project itself. We're trying to, within the nexus, because there has to be a nexus to it, you know, get as much of that as possible. So, for example, in the Goodman property, the old Kimberly-Clark, they are doing all the streets, including the full length of Ornsor from curb to curb around the development. And that was great because generally, they would only go probably half-street, and they're also going beyond where there's some other private property. So, we force them to go a little bit more. So, we are pushing the road on that. One of the items that I'd like to get from the council tonight is, we did talk about some, and it will help us develop that budget of costing for the streets based on PCI, is we have been using the, you know, water, sewer, street combination because of the water rate increase and the, hopefully, tripling of the water main replacement. That funding source is going to outpace what we can do on the streets. So, we are kind of disincorporating them from each other. So, what we'd like to do, and based on the INRAC recommendation, is look at some of these different alternatives, like the ARAM, and seeing if that helps on some of these streets, probably looking at the residential streets first to see if that can be a treatment that is something that gets us from seven to 15 years of, you know, better road condition, pushes it out, but for maybe up to half the cost, so we can get twice the amount of road improvements in. So, if we can get direction from the council to, yes, follow the INRAC recommendation, they had some tweaks on it here and there, but try to get more through a different, you know, rehabilitation method than what has been standard, realizing that we don't have the funding right now to do the full-depth reclamation that David was talking about.
And just a question on that, when you said that the sewer water is outpacing, so we're, we're able to fix more sewer and water lines, but we don't have enough funding to do the one dig, in essence, and fix the pavement, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So, in this case, that we're fixing more sewers and water, with the ARAM, we will be able to keep a little more, keep pace a bit more with that? Is that correct? A bit more, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, yeah, we would like to have it as one, but a bit more is better than a bit less.
Yeah.
So, I would move that we look at that and then have them bring that back to us so we can look at it and see if that's a way to do a bit more.
I'll second that, sir.
You know, I think it would be helpful also, if we could, I'd imagine as you're creating these maps, you know, that we could see an overlay where it would show kind of road and street conditions, you know, recommended repairs, and then perhaps there's also something with infrastructure, or, you know, sewer repairs that might be needed, so that we could see, you know, kind of the overlay as to the areas that, you know, that we can prioritize and that we can or should hit first. I think that would be helpful as well.
And, and I did appreciate the discussion on ARAM this evening. It sounds like something that should be under the jurisdiction of the Department of Defense. But as relates to that, thank you very much for your presentation, and I don't know how Ms. McWade avoided all these slings and arrows this evening, but do you have any comments based on what you've heard? Are there any conclusions or any questions that you might have with the council?
I would be interested to know, because part of the direction is to create maps and plans, is on the point of the concrete and separating out concrete to get more block on the ground? Is that something council is interested in us looking at more closely? So, that would mean we would do curb ramps, but we would not necessarily look at gutters. We would not necessarily fix sidewalks unless they were horribly egregious.
I wouldn't agree with that, because then we would come back, you fix the street, then you left the broken-up concrete.
It's not ideal, but if we're looking to get pavement...
I would include it all, just so, because if you're gonna...
Okay.
I agree.
Well, I'm not sure if there would be a distinction between arterials or between neighborhood streets. Would there be a higher or lower priority on one or the other?
For the concrete work?
Right.
For concrete work, we wouldn't recommend that we ignore it on arterials.
Okay. So, that we're strictly talking about neighborhood streets?
Yes.
You know, considering the emergency that we have right now, and it was mentioned by speakers as well, that at some level, broken street pavement becomes a public safety issue. And this council is beset by many litigants who have now increased our costs of ignoring these problems. So, to the extent that if we could, you know, this would be a partial effort to at least solve the immediate threat, I think, even if it was imperfect and left the curbs maybe in less than pristine condition, I think we'd have to consider that, considering where we're at right now. It would be the lesser of the two evils, in my opinion.
Do you want me to clarify the trees?
I don't know whether there's any agreement on that point or not, but with that, I don't know if there's anything further. I want to make sure everyone has their, their piece. And seeing no takers, it may be time to adjourn this meeting. And... I don't know.
On the staff recommendations.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Yeah, I made a motion, and we seconded to move with the staff recommendations.
Yeah, we will bring that forward at the May 4 meeting.
Yeah, that's all that was required for agenda...
Yeah, have that down, thank you. And Mr. Mayor, members of council, I do want to thank you, and I know that Meg and David want to thank you for the discussion input. Honestly, you know, like you were talking about the Brown Act, I wish we could do this more often. It does allow for a good time, because this is the only time, again, this is for the public, this is the only time we can have the five of you discuss and discuss with us these important issues.
Well, let me say, and I agree with that, and let me say, I appreciate this council's willingness to not only meet every two weeks, but to use those interim Tuesdays for something like this. I know it's a sacrifice for everybody up here. We certainly have lots of meetings and lots of time spent. And so, our willingness as a body to address this problem, whether or not we agree on the solutions, I think speaks well for the council. Also, to continue to invite and have the public provide their commentary and their ideas, I think really reflects well upon all of us. So, to the extent that you're willing to do that, I appreciate it, I know. And with that, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled council meeting, which will be April 20 at 6:30, the general session, 6:30 PM.